Thank you, welcome, all of you, all of you teachers and school personnel for coming to our school meeting tonight. Lovely to see you all here. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Decanter?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Coxer?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
And Mr. Bennen is asked.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our vice chair, Bruce Bennen, is not here, Steve Cole will be assuming the role of vice chair as the senior member on the school committee tonight. But before we get started with our agenda and our youth report and public comment, Mr. Cole has asked for a few minutes to recognize two people who have recently passed in our community who are very important to our school district.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. I'm actually just going to recognize one person tonight and...
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. And recognize the second person at the next school committee meeting. I'm speaking in remembrance of Mrs. Evangeline Leganis, who passed away on December 25th, surrounded by her loving family. She was 86 years young. Mrs. Leganis, as she was best known to several generations of Newburyport High School students, earned her degree in teaching from Marywood University in her hometown of Scranton, Pennsylvania. She earned two master's degrees, one in fine arts and another in music from Catholic University in Washington, DC. Mrs. Leganis was proud to serve as a teacher following World War II for the US Department of Defense dependent schools in Europe stationed in France and Germany where she taught art and music to children of military personnel. She was a devout member of several Greek Orthodox churches to include the Enunciation Greek Orthodox Church in Newburyport. Here at NHS, students considered the art room sanctuary and haven for creativity where everyone was welcome. Mrs. Leganis prided herself on sharing the arts with young people, offering a listening ear, and engaged in learning those whom otherwise might not have stayed in school. And she led the students to make the most of the art space, a very colorful and green space. Mrs. Leganis had many interests and later in life, what brought her the most joy was the time she spent with her family, especially her grandchildren. May we have a moment of silence for Mrs. Evangeline Leganis. We're now at our point of the first period of public comment. Public comment's meant to allow members of the audience to speak to this committee. This is not a discussion but rather an opportunity for you to express yourself, make a statement so that you may be heard by this elected body. We allow approximately, I'm not sure how many people are here for public comment. Could I see a show of hands of how many people are here for public comment? Okay. I'll allow three minutes per person for public comment. When you approach the microphone, if you could just state your name and address for the committee. Who would like to speak first?
My name is Gina Tank and I live at 14 Fox Run Drive. And I have three kids in the public school system in Newburyport. My third is Elsie Tank and she is currently in the pre-K afternoon program at the Brezner Hand School. And her birth date falls on September 5th, which is four days after the school cutoff date. So I just am trying to get clarity on what we can do to have her considered for kindergarten in the 2018 school year. I've emailed the superintendent's office twice, both to Superintendent Barcarra and Superintendent Beck, and those were passed through by Kathy Manning. And I've also had conversations with Amy Sullivan about it, who told me that this was a school committee and superintendent's issue. So I'm just, you know, with preschool and kindergarten registration coming up in February, just trying to get some clarity on what we can do to facilitate that process and just have the conversation because I do believe she is ready for kindergarten, being the third and being a girl.
That is part of our policy. That is left to the discretion of the superintendent. And the only reason you haven't heard back yet is because Amy and I haven't had a chance to have a conversation around this.
Okay.
But we will do that before the end of the week and I'll be back in touch.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alex Koyer, Tulane City Court, Newburyport. Happy New Year. I am calling, I'm here with regard to a question about the fees for high school athletics. And I think that that's a policy thing that you guys come up with. I'm curious as to why the fees are based on the athlete's grade and not the team level. And I know this isn't necessarily supposed to be a discussion, but I was wondering if someone had a quick answer with regard to that. Because the fee schedule is based on the athlete's age and not their team level.
A very quick answer is, from the time we put the fee structure into place, we wanted to encourage our freshmen to participate in sports and not say, "Well, there's no way I'm going to make it and it's going to cost a lot of money," etc. So we have looked at making sure that the freshmen have a slightly lower fee structure than we do for the rest of the team. I understand your point of view as well, where you say, "Hey, well, the JV team perhaps doesn't have as many games as a varsity team and so why don't we base it on that?" And those are questions that we talk about each time we discuss athletic fees, which we will be doing shortly.
Okay.
In the next couple, I think it's in February again, isn't it? Is something there? Usually happens February in March.
It's part of the budget process, so we certainly will take another look at that, Alex.
And I bring specifically, for example, hockey, which is, you know, between hockey and football, the most expensive sports to play. And the varsity team gets more than double ice time than the kids on the JV. They get more games, they get practices every day. And so it's a big disparity if you have a freshman or sophomore who's playing JV and one that's playing varsity and for the same price, those kids are getting, you know, double the ice time at least. So, and I, do you guys also, are you in charge of the admissions at the sporting events?
No.
So that's...
That's something the athletic director is taking care of.
Well, we have voted on increasing gate admissions in the past.
Well, there's also a big disparity there because the only games, the only places that are charged are football and hockey.
Right.
And so as a hockey parent, I've already paid, you know, $850 for my kids to play and then I still have to go and pay $7 every time to go see them play. But when my kids play soccer, I got to go see them for free. So, you know, it just seems like...
Night soccer games typically charge admission fees.
Yeah. I know in the past, and maybe this is something we can rekindle for next year, is we've offered passes for families who are paying fees so that they...
I know they want for the students, but...
...defer some of the costs so you can go to the games free. So maybe that's something we can address in the next year's discussions.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Peter Hill, president, Newburyport Teacher Association. First of all, Mr. Cole, thank you very much for recognizing Evangeline. I had the great opportunity to work with her for a number of years and she is a memorable person that, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to work with her, and we have plenty of stories about her for what she did. And I know that the kids absolutely enjoyed having her as an art teacher.
As a student, I witnessed her engage kids who otherwise would not stay in school firsthand. So it's a very sad time, but nice to be able to reflect on such a person.
Yes. Also, I'd like to welcome the new members to the school committee. And if Mr. Bennen was here, I was going to congratulate him on his selection to be the chair, but hopefully I'll see him tomorrow night at another meeting, as long as that still happens. So tonight, we, as you can see behind me, are here to respond to comments made concerning the late start proposal. Our understanding is that a committee was formed in March of 2017 to review research about later start times and to gather information on how different start times and schedules could impact our schools. We also understand that eight meetings were scheduled for this committee to meet with an additional meeting to present findings to the full school committee. We appreciate the time and effort put forth by all the committee members, especially our teacher volunteers. However, there is a perception that we have, either building-wise or collectively obstructed or do not understand the rationale behind the proposal. From our perspective, this is inaccurate. Our members actively participated in the charge of the committee, worked collaboratively with the other committee members, and engaged colleagues through a survey as well as in group and individual conversations. Our teachers responded with what the possible impacts could be, based on a variety of scenarios. We are professionals who know how to research, analyze, and interpret and understand information. We are stakeholders in the development of the implementation of the strategic plan, especially when it comes to reimagining teaching and learning. We embrace Clipper values by showing respect for others' views, treating others the way that we want to be treated, and accepting responsibilities for our actions and words. In the future, we hope that when teacher input is commented on in this setting or in any other forum, that the value of respect, kindness, and responsibility are not only taken into consideration, but are practiced. I thank the committee for listening and I yield the rest of my time.
Good evening. I'm Pam Jamison, art teacher at the Brezner Hand School. And I'd also just like to congratulate Peter Hill on bringing forth this statement for the teachers' union and also to mention that I was, in fact, part of the committee at the Brezner Hand level. And we did an extensive amount of work to come to some conclusions in a professional way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Denise Logan. I live at 72 Prospect Street. I had a comment about the later start times. Firstly, I am a parent of children who range from the age of kindergarten to high school. And I don't believe that the school has taken into consideration what the later start times would do to the younger children in particular. It will greatly affect their learning level. They're going to be exhausted by the time they get home. They're just, they're not going to be able to function. And the other thing that I don't believe is taken into consideration is parents like me who can't just change a schedule. We would have to find before-school and after-school care. There are limited resources for that in this town as it is, and it is quite costly. And they're limited in space. So it's just, I'd like you to think more about what this would do to the younger children in particular. I agree with it on the high school level, but I don't agree with it with the younger ones. Thanks.
If there's no further comment, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Do we have warrants this evening?
We do. We have three warrants this evening. Three warrants this evening. I move that the following name bills of Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $365,941.91 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That warrant passes?
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $28,459.89 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $9,162.59 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Decanter. Minutes from the Monday, December 18th, 2017, business meeting of the Newburyport School Committee have been distributed to all members. Are there any amendments to these minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes passed unanimously and will be forwarded for the record. Our next item is a report from Mr. Lane, our NHS representative. Mr. Lane?
All right. This week is exam week for the high schools, so we're going from 7:30 to 12:00. So stressful time for all those high school kids right now especially. Semester two will begin January 22nd. In club activities, we have Newburyport Youth Services is setting up a stress-free zone for the students Wednesday and Thursday between or after their exams, so they can just ride a mechanical bull, shoot some basketballs, hang out, just relax a little bit. National Honor Society is providing tree pickup for the last time on the 22nd. That's this Saturday. So if you have those trees, please, you know, it's a great cause, so please donate to that. Two exchange students will be, from Brazil, will be starting school Monday through the Educus program. That's a great, you know, way to, you know, cultureize Newburyport a little bit more. The Career Expo theme will be STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. That'll be on February 1st from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery ASBAB test will be on February 15th at 7:30 a.m. The DLL. Russian slips need to be turned in by February 14th. So if you have a son or daughter looking for any career in the military, strongly buy them, take that. And SAT prep classes for the March SAT begins on Monday, the 22nd. That's math. And English prep will be on the 23rd. Finally, part-time job for sterilization assistant at Coughlin Orthodontic will be Monday through Thursdays, 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. They will train and it's a shared position between two students. If you're interested, please email drkortho@yahoo.com or see Mrs. Zano in the guidance office. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
I assume you want to go study. Good luck on your exams.
Thank you very much.
Your excuse is, thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is a request for an overnight trip of the National Art Honor Society to New York City from March 2nd to the 4th. I believe we have three, at least three representatives from the art department. I see some students. Would you mind introducing yourselves?
I'm Bianca Romero.
Allison Peterson.
Should mention that the president and the vice president of the National Art Honor Society, Aileen McConie, I'm here with my dear Mary Rakoski from the art department.
You want to say something about the trip?
Sure. Well, I think the trip is very educational in itself, the whole time that we're there. We're there for a weekend. And we go to a few museums and all the artwork is extraordinary and extremely inspiring. So it's definitely well worth it. It's my fourth year going. It's very fun. I love hanging out with my peers for a whole weekend and we go to, yeah, we go to a Broadway show and this year we're going to a matinee. Yeah, it's a great time to get to know each other and...
In addition to being educational on the art, it's also education on culture of New York and it just inspires us to create more art, which can benefit the community and...
You should have the agenda that we passed in. We're going the first weekend in March this year, so it'll be a little chilly. We expect the trip to be the same price as last year, which was $350. We have a, we reached out to families in case there were any families that might need assistance for them to notify us and so that we can look at ways that we can assist. We have done some tremendous fundraising. Mrs. Rakoski especially runs our annual art fundraiser at the Newburyport Art Association, our art auction, and we did extremely well. I think it was... Was this our best year this year?
Almost.
Almost our best year. Last year was our best year, but we had carryover from last year, so that helps. So we've been able to assist families every year on the trips. So we're going to go to four major museums. We have, we're going to be staying at a hotel in Brooklyn. The students will have dinners provided, breakfast provided, they'll be having lunch on their own. And we have a number of galleries. We also go to flea market because they love that every year. So it should be an exciting trip.
Motion to approve?
Questions?
There's a motion on table to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Congratulations. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you, we will.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a data conversion presentation led by school administrators. And may I leave it up to you, superintendent, to introduce said administrators?
I'm going to start off. Ms. Depp? I'm going to move to the audience for the presentation.
And I'm going to ask Emily Ruffin, our literacy coordinator, and Liz Kingsley, our STEM coordinator, to join me.
I heard a beep. Is it warming up? Warming up sometimes it takes a second. Yeah.
I don't write things. So you did that one.
All right. So thank you for having us this evening. This data presentation is going to be a little bit different than what our MCAS presentation has been in the past because we really want to expand our conversation around the kind of data that we use. Tonight is going to focus on standardized data, but we want to even expand that conversation from that perspective on the way data is used for making decisions around teaching and learning in the district. This data that you're going to see tonight does not include the data that's being gathered on a regular basis in the classroom. That's based on curriculum materials, that may be performance-based, that may be formative, happening along the way, or even summative at the end of a unit. So what you're going to see are some of the data sources that are more standardized in the work that we're doing. Okay. So we're going to start by looking at how we work collaboratively with the state to meet the needs of our students. So we're just going to break that down for you, just as a reminder, that the state sets learning standards. And these learning standards basically describe what the expectations are around what our students should know and be able to do at any period of time in their education in each content area. Curriculum is built at the local level. So we choose the curriculum, we build our curriculum. That means what we are going to be teaching and the resources that we'll be using to support that learning as we go along. And that includes all of the resources that also support what's happening at the classroom level. So as I stated when we started, this presentation isn't going to get into that level of detail. But when we do talk about curriculum, we're talking about resources, we're talking about the instructional strategies that are associated with that through instruction, as you see as our next level. But we're also talking about the variety of assessments that are used, that all come together to build that bigger package. And then, of course, as we're instructing our students, teachers provide a variety of approaches to instruction. And, you know, what we're hoping to accomplish through that is for our students to learn, retain, and apply the information so that they can build on their knowledge from year to year. And then there's testing. And there are a variety of state and local assessments that we use to help us make decisions. And those are used at the state level to help make decisions around what our schools need, and they're used at the local level for a variety of reasons too. We use some assessments to help us make decisions about our curriculum. We use other assessments to help us make decisions around instruction. We use other assessments to help us identify students that may need enrichment or extra supports beyond what our core curriculum is offering. As you know, last year, our students participated in the Next Generation MCAS. So this is, we had a Legacy MCAS and then we had a year where we did park assessments and then we had a year where there was a new MCAS assessment put in place that combined some of the elements from what the park assessment was, some of the elements from the Legacy MCAS test, and was aligned to the changing standards of the state. So the state also has developed new English language arts standards, new math standards, and now new science standards. So this test in the revision really is looking at two things. We're looking at to what degree a student is meeting the state's standards at each grade level in the tested areas, because not all of our content areas are tested through an MCAS, and to the extent in which the district curriculum is aligned to the state frameworks. But as you know, we receive the results from the MCAS test in the fall and the students take the test in the spring. So the way we can use that information is really valuable when we're looking at our curriculum. Are there any gaps? Are there things like that? Are we, do we have any of the standards that are not aligned? But to inform us about our instructional practice for the student, we get limited information about that because it is several months old by the time we see that data. So in turn, we started to use other assessments to give us more current information. But before we get into that, I want you to see the way the Next Generation MCAS test was scored. And on the left, you see the scoring levels of the Legacy Test. And on the right, you'll see the scoring levels of the Next Generation. So as we speak and we show you some of this data tonight, I just want you to have a better understanding. So the Legacy Test used to categorize students in an advanced, a proficient, a needs improvement or warning levels. On the Next Generation exam, the students are scored in exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, or not meeting expectations. Those expectations are set against what the standards are. I'm going to let Emily talk to you a little bit about our DIBELS assessment. Good evening. I know a number of you are already familiar with DIBELS, but I wanted to explain it further. We use DIBELS in K-3 and we use this as a...
to explain it further. We use DIBELS in K-3, and we use this as a preventative model of literacy so that we can assess where students are before they're struggling in reading. So DIBELS will mainly assess pre-reading skills before students are readers and then bridge into fluency. So we assess phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency at those levels. We use it as a screening tool, meaning it's somewhat of a temperature check for our students. Every student gets it, and it allows us to see, find any red flags of students using an objective measure rather than a subjective measure to help us predict future reading difficulties. It is standardized. We give it three times a year. I'm not sure if this is-
Disney.
Okay. This is showing this year's fall kindergarten data. And if you look at the green bar, it shows 71% of entering kindergarteners this year met the criteria for passing at Core on DIBELS. That's a, you know, at kindergarten, walking in the door of kindergarten, we basically look at, are you able to name a few letters, and are you able to say the first sound of a word? So it's very, very beginning level literacy. We usually see scores slightly higher than this of our entering kindergarteners, but we still have the large majority entering prepared for kindergarten at the literacy level. Here you see first grade on the left, second in the middle, and third grade on the right. And this shows our beginning of year scores for this year's grades. And you'll see clearly the large majority of our students are meeting core expectations on DIBELS. The 76% at first grade is the highest that we have seen in recent years entering first grade, which we're pleased to see that, and we'd like to see that continue to rise. The second grade scores are the second highest in recent years. Third has remained very much the same. Our, if you'd also take a look at our, our red bars, that's important to take note of. The students who are most struggling are most at risk to meet future benchmarks in literacy. Those numbers we'd like to see continue to decrease over time. So we're in the midst of analysis now. We'll have updated data soon. Liz?
Are those students with special needs?
All students. So students with special needs-
I mean primarily in the bottom, in the sensory?
Yes, but not all, because a lot of times, students aren't identified on an IEP till later. Yeah.
So at the Bresnahan, we've also done some work with a math screening assessment. So the purpose for this was, when, when I first started, there was really not a way to see how students came into the lower grades, so what kinds of benchmark skills they came with. We knew that there was the DIBELS test, and that gave some literacy information, but we were really looking for some information around math and preparedness. So, so the math screening test is given to all students in grades one through three. It's a pretty short test. It's given by the stu-, by the teachers to all students. They're in-house designed, and they're scored by the math interventionists. So we have math interventionists at the Bresnahan, and the classroom teachers administer the test, and Steve, and sometimes if he needs help, I help him score the tests. So what this test gives us is a baseline understanding of where kids are coming in. And the test is based on the prior year standards. So we're giving it right at the beginning of September, and so this informs a few of the things that we do. So the standards-based assessments provides us with, provides classroom teachers with baseline mathematics information about their students early in the school year. The math interventionist has, is provided with a cohort of students who are below grade level and need targeted intervention. And then a specific content gap information is available for prior year grade-level teams. So we can see if there's standards that are, the kids are struggling with as they, as they come in, we can look back and provide that information for the prior year teachers. It also gives links for remediation and practice based on missed questions and standards. So that's part of the test, is how we can look at where some of the gaps are for students, and how we can, as classroom teachers, put some things in place that will help them. So let's go down here. So this is the math screening data for this current year, and it looks similar to what it always looks like from year to year. And that's because we set the benchmark at being about eighty-five, or 65% of the, of passing the scores, of the scores that which are passing. So we see that at the, in the red zone, those are students that are either seen by the interventionist as a push-in, so he either goes into classrooms, or sometimes they're pulled out. But there's one interventionist in math for, you know, 780 students or whatever. So we, we have to be kind of creative about how we use his services. And this is the spring 2017 MCAS for grade three. So this shows all of the, our scores for reading and for math, as well as the state for reading and math. So the first two are the reading, Newburyport, and then the state for grade three, and then the second two are the math and the state for grade three. So we're seeing that our students are, seem to be holding their own or doing pretty well. We have seen across the board the math scores being, being strong, and you'll see those as we continue to go forward. So maybe, Christina, are you, are you flying solo today?
Yeah.
All right. So if Christina will join us, that would be great. Yes, please.
Before Christina starts, I'm just going to take us back to this slide, because you're going to see this slide for every grade level as we go along. And it's really given to you as a comparison. So we're probably not going to talk about it a lot. Every time you see it, it's for your reference. It's in your packet as well. But if you remember, when we first talked about the new, the Next Generation MCAS exam, we talked about how that was recalibrated, and that many of the scores, they were starting with a baseline this year. And Newburyport data trended a little better than the state in that recalibration. But you'll see it's not that far off from the way the, the state scores happen. So when, you know, as we go through the presentation, you'll see more of that, but I just wanted to let you know that. It's all yours, Christina.
Thank you. Good evening. We took a different approach, as Angela had said, in terms of developing this presentation for you this evening. So all of the school slides from this point forward will include conclusions that we came up with as a result of looking at the data. And for kindergarten, some of this was already mentioned by Emily Russon. We're taking a look at about 30% of our incoming kindergarteners this year did not demonstrate a strong pre-reading skill foundation, and that is based upon the Fall DIBELS. And therefore, we're taking a look at the Tier One Instruction, Instruction for All Students in Kindergarten, and we're placing a heavy emphasis on phonemic awareness and letter identification. And Amy, as well as the kindergarten teachers, have taken a look at the literacy block and have created a schedule so that there is uninterrupted time during literacy instruction, including intervention. And one of the interventions that we use at this level is Lexia, which is an online program to help students with these skills. Moving forward, we also wanted to comment on, our goal is to enhance core instruction to ensure all students are meeting their potential. And we look at this data through the lens of a multifaceted assessment review of, and this was something that Angela had mentioned earlier as well, the various types of assessments that we provide students to collect data. And that is beyond our MCAS assessments, beyond our DIBELS, but we also have the Benchmark Assessment System. The teachers collect running records and observational data, looking at writing and so forth and so on. In addition to that, we also take a look at the interventions that are in place, the specialized instruction that's in place, our RTI, Response to Intervention System, as well as the referral process for formal Additionally, one of the things that you will be hearing this evening runs through as a common thread, taking a look at the ways we are meeting students for who they are and where they're at, and meeting their needs from a whole student perspective, whole child perspective, I should say. And we continue, I know you've heard a lot about us bringing mindfulness to the classroom. You've heard, you know plenty about the district's Clipper values and our school's expected behaviors. We continue to embed all of this to help our children become readily available to learn and to focus, whether they are in a literacy class, a PE class, an art class, mathematics. Children need to feel strong and secure about who they are and where they are in the moment. In terms of a success story, this is a little bit of an unusual one to bring here to you this evening, but it captivates a lot of what happens in our school community as a result of not only wonderful teaching, but also partnerships with the NEF and NEFBC. As a result of a partnership grant over these last few years that Emily Russon initiated with classroom teachers in grades one, two, and three. However, this year, we've been focusing, I should say, K through three. But this year, we're focusing on primarily grade three with a partnership with Deirdre Buzina and Acting Out Productions. And we are finding that this type of work with Rita's, with Rita's Theater is increasing student reading fluency, but also their comprehension. Using these theater techniques is making their work engaging, inauthentic, hence creating an authentic learning opportunity. And then we also, we're preparing students for this through an intensive biography study in January for the theater, with the theater method or methods. You should see the children come alive. This is an opportunity for them to really bring to life the theater, not only the theater production, but really about what they are reading. It's quite amazing to watch. It doesn't matter if you're in kindergarten, grade one, grade two, or grade three classroom. It's across the board. As a result of our analysis work, we are talking about continuing on with explicit instruction, focusing on quality discussion and talk, holding students accountable to talk, to discussion-based opportunities between themselves, as well as engaging opportunities with the teacher. Focusing on analyzing text. Now, this is where we're moving to, at a deeper level. The quality discussion, talks, and strategic reading aligned with analyzing text while meeting student needs. I, I say this because at all times, we need to be thinking about what each individual learner's needs are, as well as their strengths, to capitalize on the small group instruction. Oftentimes, small group instruction is strategy-based. It's not always based on the level at which the children are reading, but based on the strategies that need strengthening. This year, we are conducting a survey through our school council to help identify conference-like or workshop-like agendas that teachers would like for professional development on an ad- on an as-needed basis. We are going to be utilizing staff meeting time for mini workshops, conference-like workshops for professional development. Often, these things will be areas that they would like to be reviewed, such as guided reading, running records, things that have been in place for a while, but we need refreshers. That survey is currently being developed and will be implemented within the next few weeks. We also have started a data wall this year to, that's showing student growth primarily in literacy thus far, but we also want it to include mathematics. And that's an area that we're going to be able to grow it this winter, as well as going into the spring. Additionally, this data wall is connecting students in our RTI process, children in special education, in our Title One programming, as well as children who receive mathematics intervention through our math interventionists. So that is a snapshot of our conclusion, a success story, and as well as our action Any questions for me or for any one of us thus far?
I sent a lot of questions. I'm not sure if you want to address, or how many, I mean, there's 48 slides to go through. So I'm not sure what, what the scope of our conversation is going to be.
We're going to try to read some of the answers to your questions, David, and I don't know that we've done that successfully thus far, but-
I mean, on the big picture, I think I have two questions. Number one, across all slides is about longitudinal data. So for example, you said 30% of incoming kindergartens didn't demonstrate foundation for strong pre-reading skills. Is that different than usual, and if so, how significant?
Right. So the, we didn't really present longitudinal data in terms of looking, comparing to past years, which we definitely could provide you. It, it did present differently to us that the scores of the incoming kindergarteners in the past five to seven years, it was about 10% lower than usual, which was remarkable to us enough. We still, it's not that we don't teach phonemic awareness and letter identification to all kindergartners. We do. We just wanted to ensure that the explicitness of the instruction would reach the students who were struggling. So we wanted to make sure they had opportunity to learn that in, whether it meant small group or more hands-on, or, and just reemphasize the importance of that with the grade level.
And so I guess along those lines, I'm also thinking across the board about students who might have excelled, because none of the, I guess, none of the local data talked about students who probably came in exceptionally high. And like, again, with the kindergarten thing, if we're changing the way we approach kindergarten instruction, for here, it's 30%, but if you're saying it's really only a 10% shift, we have a 10% shift in our student skills from year to year, but we're shifting, as you explained here, the entire Tier One emphasis towards more phonemic awareness. That seems like a dramatic change in curriculum for a small percentage of kids.
Well, to us, it represented a large amount. To have 30% of your Tier One, we wouldn't take them out, you know. So we just want to make sure that they have access to it within.
I understand. I agree. 30% of kids without phonemic awareness, that's, something needs to be done. But I'm just, I'm thinking like, if we shift it, now you're saying we've gone from 20% to 30%. So it's really just a, a 10% So it's really just a ten percent shift. But we're going to shift the whole grade level. So I'm trying to think of what's happening to everybody. So if we're meeting, as you said before, Ms. Davis, about helping all kids meet their potential, I'm sure there are some kids who came in reading exceptionally well.
Sure.
And when you said if they can recognize certain letters, I'm sure there are a lot of kids who came into kindergarten reading well. So...
Probably the structure of our elementary classroom provides the most different, I don't know if you want to jump in, the most differentiation to students. So the shift of the, I think I addressed the shift of the ten percent meaning an emphasis in the tier-one. But the, so say you have some very high achievers, say you have some kindergartners walk in reading with our, we use the Daily Five routine, and that allows students to rotate through different types of reading and conferencing with the teacher, setting expectations for their individual goals. That's our structure that we believe promotes the differentiation. We can always grow and do that better. And so here, we just wanted to emphasize that this class looked a little different. And therefore, we just wanted to ensure that we weren't skipping over anything that's essential at kindergarten. Emily, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think that holds true beyond kindergarten as well in terms of the small group instruction. And I had mentioned the strategic groups, the strategic reading groups that we have for literacy. But in terms of the younger children, I think it also, when we say we're emphasizing it, it's also because we still have a program, a resource that we're using called Spell Links. And that is also something that we are still developing proficiency in in terms of implementation and explicit instruction. So it's an area that we continue to grow in. And I think that that growth is continuous. And part of the reason I think the kindergarten is also being focused on here with that thirty percent is because we also want to ensure that the foundational skills are going to get stronger and stronger for all students as they move through kindergarten, through first grade, so that they are able to sustain that learning and move forward in a very strong way. And so there, I think, you know, that's also part of the reason that we're looking heavily at this group in particular.
And if I can just add one thing to that, David. You know, when you go into a kindergarten classroom, it's not unusual to see a huge continuum. We have students who come in in this situation, which was remarkable to us that this percentage was up. So by adjusting the core in a way that addresses that across the board, it's only one adjustment that's been made to the overall core curriculum. But there are many students that enter kindergarten that are reading and are, and the instruction is differentiated for our readers, for those who are working on letter recognition, for those who understand their letters, for those who are moving from phonemic awareness into phonics. There's a large continuum. So differentiation is really key in these early grades to meet the needs of the students.
And I was just going to add that for the children that receive support through our Title I, our regular intervention, as well as through special education, they're receiving that instruction not only in the classroom, but they're also receiving it in addition to, with their Title I teacher or with their special educator, so that they are getting a heavy dose of good, solid instruction and an opportunity to practice their learning and apply with their learning.
So it's like a limited pull-out program?
For Title I?
The Title I, yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a program where it's...
It's charted, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't want to jump over you there.
Can I ask one more question about the math assessment? You said that students with a percentage rank above sixty-five percent are considered at benchmark. So does that mean that it's like a scaled? So we're, so the benchmark is on a curve?
Well, it's the percentage of students that answer the questions correctly. So it's not about the number, it's not about the sixty-five percent. It's whoever ends up below that ends up in those. So it's, it's the percentage of kids that don't answer those questions correctly. Is that what I'm, is that answering your question? You're looking at me like you're...
No, that didn't, I'm sorry, that didn't make any sense to me. So I'm trying to understand, it says they're ranked above sixty-five percent. So I'm just trying to figure out if that's sixty-five percent of the questions correct on an assessment like this?
Yeah.
That they're a benchmark?
Yes.
So it's like getting a D?
No, it's not. No, it's there...
If you get sixty-five percent of questions right, that's...
That's because you're attaching your grade to that.
Yeah, it's not as, it's not as, it's...
I'm just trying to... So it's a percentage of the number of students get the answer right, correct? Is that what you're saying? It's not a percent, it's not the number of questions that each student gets right?
Right, right.
You're going to have to say that again.
Well, we, and we, we don't usually do the number piece of it. You know, what we're usually doing is we're definitely putting the kids in rank order. So those kids that are in that bottom group are the ones that are needing the interventions. The information we can get from that is, are there a bigger group? Are there more of those kids that are not successful on certain standards? And we find that that's the data that we like to look at because those are the things that are going to influence what happens in the classroom. So just being able to figure out where the gaps are, that's the important piece for, for us.
Is it a scale of CAT scores?
Yes. It's a scale of CAT scores.
Right, yeah. That makes sense to me, so...
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, so today? Are you good?
Good?
Fine.
Tara, can you come?
Sure. Thank you, Christine.
So in, starting in fourth grade, we have an assessment that we've been using over the last probably two or three years. I think we've... About three years. So it's called STAR 360. It's a Renaissance prob, uh, assessment. And it, we have it for STAR reading and for STAR math. And it's a nationally-normed computer adaptive measure of general achievement. So what we're using it for is we're trying to figure out where some kids are coming in. So we're using it as a screening measure. And we're, we're giving this test three times a year in grades four through eight. Grade seven and eight, this was their, this is their first year of using it. But in fourth and fifth, we've used it over the last three years, first as a pilot and then the last two years for, to inform some of our instructional decisions and also our interventionist schedule. So the assessments are given three times a year. It's a powerful tool that allows for grouping and differentiation. There are, STAR allows us to see how specific interventions are working in the classroom and as a pull-out. And we're also able to use the tool, that's the STAR tools, to group kids and provide interventions either in, within the classroom or also outside of the classroom. There are, as part of the STAR assessment, there are twelve thousand vetted activities, projects, remediation, extensions, enrichment that are part of it. And Tara's going to speak a little bit more to that as we go through. Emily's going to look at the literacy data, and I'm going to look at the math data. So I'll let Emily go first.
Okay. So we were eager to see this year's MCAS data, particularly because it was the first data we were receiving from the new two-point-oh version. And what you're looking at on the left side is the third grade reading MCAS. We put it on this slide because these are mostly this year's fourth graders. So we have on the left, last year's third graders, this year's fourth graders, MCAS results. And on the right, we have this year's fourth graders, that mostly the same students, and their results on the fall STAR assessment. Any questions just on what you're looking at?
Same cohort.
Same cohort. And, and it lends itself to comparison, but it isn't the sole reason we're using STAR 360 to compare to MCAS. We're using it because it's more timely to us. It fills in a need. We, prior to STAR 360, solely had our Benchmark Assessment System, which is very useful, but it is, it is time-consuming and it is subjective. So it's very useful for the teacher on a, on a one-to-one basis, and they still use the Benchmark Assessment. But what they are able to glean out of STAR in those first weeks of schools helps them get going right away. What you see on the left bar is that a combined forty-seven percent of our students met expectations or exceeded expectations when they took the MCAS in spring of third grade. One thing I should have mentioned when we were looking at DIBELS is that this time of year, in winter, when we look at our DIBELS, if we look at the students who meet the seventieth percentile and above, it's predictive of how they'll do an MCAS in the spring. So we do take a look at that because it helps capture, if you notice, this is not unlike other MCAS years where there is a large group, that blue group, that is almost there and didn't yet make it. So it helps us notice the students that perhaps weren't otherwise showing us concern. In many cases, these students are able to meet the standard, but perhaps not yet independently. They can do it in the classroom, but they can't yet transfer it when they leave the classroom. So we want to be able to give those students more opportunities to put their strategies into action independently and see success. Now, we're looking at this year's fifth graders. So the bar on the left shows last year's MCAS for grade four. And the bar on the right shows our STAR results for those same students, the same cohort in fifth grade this year. The scores are slightly higher, but again, show mostly that about fifty percent, a little higher, are meeting and exceeding the standards. The standards are rigorous, and we are working towards helping students meet these more independently. Students on MCAS are asked to analyze multiple texts and are asked to put their writing in play to express their comprehension. So it is a very rigorous test. STAR, as Liz mentioned, is looking at standards but adjusts individually by the student so that when they hit a ceiling that's too difficult for them, it adjusts the questions so that we can identify their zone of proximal development, their area where they're performing best. And so I'll let Tara, yeah, do you want to add to that?
Is this correlation between DIBELS and MCAS as well as the STAR?
The predictive nature of STAR. I, you know, it's new to us and, and so we don't have yet enough data to look at, but the initial data is, is pretty predictive. We, we find that students have to be pretty independent with their reading and their fluency and their vocabulary so that they have their critical thinking skills accessed for the high-level tests that they have.
Two quick questions, Emily?
Yes.
We give STAR three times a year? So we do it in the spring?
There's a winter testing going on right now.
We do fall, fall, winter, and spring.
Fall, winter, and spring? And so spring is like May, June, like after MCAS?
Right.
Yes, it's after MCAS.
And there's a, I would imagine, the same predictive drop between spring and fall?
So, right, summer slide.
Summer slide.
So, so summer slide is something we are very interested in watching. So, and that addresses that students leave the year, say eighty percent, and come back at, say, sixty percent. Where we see that drop the most is in our grades K to one and one to two. And we've been able to narrow that gap from twenty percent to ten percent, and we're looking to close it tighter. We also see the biggest drop with our most struggling students. Our most struggling students drop the most over the summer. And we offer summer programming, but we're looking at ways to better support our students through the summer. We definitely see higher scores in the spring than, say, our MCAS results. They, they continue to do better throughout the year. And then our test does adjust in the fall. For, especially the normed tests adjust based on all other students taking a fall test after a summer dip. Does that make sense? So...
So the test adjusts.
Yes, yeah.
Second question, is it all STARs or multiple choice? So is it like open response in that?
Yeah, it's not writing.
Not writing? So do we know, like, I'm looking at bands, and it seems to me like they align. The adder above benchmark on the STAR would align with the meeting and exceeding expectations in the MCAS. So they're pretty across the board. But if we took writing out of the picture?
Truthfully, I don't really feel like they can be compared like that, David, only because they're, they're two completely different types of assessments, and they do two completely different things. So STAR 360, you take it, I take it, the mayor takes it. It's going to adjust for me as I'm answering the question. So it's going to adjust as I take the test. So if I keep doing well, it's going to keep challenging me. It's going to challenge me. It's going to challenge me. Once I start bottoming out with a number of, you know, getting incorrect answers, then it will start to level off. So it's very, STAR is very individualized, whereas the MCAS, I feel like is, you know, well, obviously, it's more, it's more global. So I think they both give us different types of information, and we use them for different reasons.
I'm just trying to, I guess the end result of the question was whether or not we knew how writing is affecting our MCAS scores.
Right. Yeah, I mean, when we look at, when we look at all the data and we break it down, you know, we look at our, we look at the writing. We look at part of our conclusion is around some of the pieces that, you know, when we look at the MCAS data, we're looking, obviously, a little bit more globally. Because we are able to look at each individual student's scores and see where they are and see kind of the pieces that we need to work on. Right, which would be, right, because STAR doesn't assess the writing at all. We also have rubrics for all three genres of our writing at fourth and fifth grade through SRSD that we've done. It was part of our school improvement plan to work on our rubrics, do pre-assessments, post-assessments. So we do a lot of work around that as well. So those are, those are the things that you wouldn't see up here.
So this is similar to what Emily was talking about in terms of literacy. This is, or the reading. This is the math data. And the left-hand side is the grade four, sorry, grade three MCAS data. And then on the right-hand side is the grade four fall STAR data. And so it is, it's similar to what Emily was saying. It's hard to compare them. We do see that about sixty percent of our students are, you know, in those top bands. One thing that's really interesting about the STAR data for the MOLIN is that there's the interventionist, I think, are you going to speak to this a little bit about the data from that? So one thing that we've found is that the, when we look at these red students that are on this slide in fifth grade and these students that are in the red here, what we've been able to do is look at the, because we get scores on them from STAR right at the beginning of the year, we're able to look at those students and we're able to put interventions in place right away that will help meet those students' needs. And these are our most struggling students. So they are, in some cases, they're two grade levels below the expectation. So it can be, you know, really challenging for classroom teachers, but also for interventionists. But now we have some information that we can use to help to influence how they're doing. So I just want to report some of the data that we have, and Tara's going to speak a little bit more about this when she does her analysis. But using the STAR data for incoming fourth-grade students, we were able to identify twenty-eight students that were below grade level in reading. So they were, that nine, that group of nine percent equaled twenty-eight students. And then those students received intervention either in the classroom or pulled out of the classroom. And on November, and at the beginning of November, we were able to do another STAR test on those students. And all but two moved up into the reading percentile and grade equivalent that was on grade level. So, so we saw a huge percent of those kids that were now... that were now successful and had, had grown in terms of their grade level equivalent and also their reading percentiles. So now, we were at the, in the November STAR, we were, we went from twenty-eight students in that lowest proficiency level, urgent intervention, to only fourteen people, fourteen kids. So that cut those kids in half, but all except for two raised their scores. And in math, we had twenty-four students below grade level or, and in that urgent intervention. And on November eighth, after their intervention, teacher had, had provided intervention services for them, we only had eight students that were below grade level. So that's a pretty amazing, those are pretty amazing numbers, and those are numbers that we wouldn't really have if we didn't have the data that we could use to help inform what interventions we've put in place for those students. So it's just, I think, and they're, these are all students that are not on an IEP. So none of these students were on an IEP. That's, that's right. So we also found that there were some of the reasons why we like to look at both the MCAS data and the STAR data is we can look at what the standards are where kids are struggling. So that's been a really important way for us to use this tool is if the, when we looked at the third-grade incoming, the rising fourth graders, when we looked at their MCAS data, we found that there were some really significant problems in fractions. Well, that's what also showed up on the first, on the September STAR data. So we were able to really get ahead of some of those problems that we were seeing, looking at both the MCAS data in terms of the standards and also the STAR data as a cohort and with the standards. So I know Christina had a third-grade team that looked together, looked at a lot of this data and came up with some ideas for how we were going to use it, too. So, so I'll ask, you want it to look?
I just have a general question on, regarding literacy. And I guess, well, general but specific. When do chapter books come into play in a student's learning? Because it's my understanding that they generally come into play at grade four. So I guess in looking at how you're assessing between three and four, how does that figure in, or how is that accounted for? Because that, you know, it's always been, I've always, in my past experience, I've learned that, that's quite a transition. So I don't know if, you know...
Well, I think it is a big transition from grade three to grade four. There's a, and if you, the standards are, look like a big leap, too, when you look at them. We're asking students to comprehend at very high levels. So whether it's a chapter book or an informational text, it doesn't matter as much. But we, the standards are explicit about talking about text range and complexity. So that even if a text is, we, we used to perhaps approach only teaching students the text level that they were capable of reading. What we're now challenged with is stretching a student beyond what they're capable of reading, regardless of their grade. Not stretching them too far, but we want to make sure that students have access to language-rich texts with complex themes. We want to make sure that they have access to reading informational text that will help them learn and, and give them the strategies so that they can read that closely and decipher it for themselves. So sometimes what that means is taking an in-depth text and bring it down to a small level, looking at just a small piece of that, and rereading it with strategies to help them. But chapter books are introduced as early as our youngest grades in terms of read aloud and students who are capable of reading them. They're definitely involved in our units in second grade and up, but we make sure that they're accessible to the students. For those who are not yet able to read them, we have audio versions, for example. There are lots of different ways to access that.
Thank you.
So this is the science data. So we've, you know, continued to try and approve science instruction. We've got a new science standards-based programming in grades three, four, and five. That's called STEM Scopes. And we're also piloting that program, STEM Scopes, in K one and two. So this is the first year of full implementation for three, four, and five, and we're so far pleased with how it's gone. The science and STEM instruction today is really different than the way it used to be. This test is also the, the legacy test still, so some of the standards have been updated, but we're really looking at science instruction as being, you know, looking at core ideas and phenomena with inquiry and design-based learning. So, and as most of you guys know, we've got some really great programming going on K to twelve in terms of science and STEM and tech engineering and robotics. And so we're, so far, we're really pleased with those outcomes with, especially in terms of student engagement. And we'll see how it affects those tests as we go forward.
Yeah, I would just add to that that we're not seeing the results of that on an MCAS exam yet. You know, that it just hasn't been in place long enough. We're still building our elementary program to reach a level where we'll start to see some of the benefits of that. As a matter of fact, you know, if you remember, as we started to adjust our curriculum materials and aligned to the new science standards, we started working backwards from grade eight. So our implementation happened at, with the new resources at the middle school first, and we still haven't even gone through a full rotation of students at the middle school that have had the new resources yet. So, you know, we have, we're encouraged with the progress we're seeing on the classroom level, with the kinds of performance assessments that we're seeing in class, and we hope that that will all start to show in the standardized test with time.
So you had this in advance, so you're able to just see a piece of, I mean, clearly, we didn't list all of the conclusions that we come up with when we are working in our schools, but we did choose, just to point something out around, you know, what we do look at for, just an example, really, of what we look at for when we're looking at the MCAS. So some of our areas to target are integration of knowledge and ideas in ELA and fractions and math. And in terms of the assessments that we use, you've seen an example of MCAS, STAR 360, and then above and beyond that, there are the in-class assessments, which we've spoken of kind of a number of times, probably at school committee meetings that you've heard of. I do believe our interventionist is a great success. We, Kristin Smolsky is our interventionist. She was a fourth-grade teacher for a number of years. She is, we look at the data almost every eight weeks to see which kids can move out and have reached grade level. Again, it's students that are not on IEP. It is students that are just basically struggling with a certain subject area. And she uses a number of research-based programs. We only have one interventionist from MOLIN. She does literacy and math. And so our focus initially this year was looking at fourth grade. So, and the bonus of that was we had less fifth graders that needed intervention because they got it last year with Kristin. Last year, we were also fortunate enough to have a fellow from Endicott that, oops.
Smooth, that's a roll.
Okay. I don't know what to do with that. We had a fellow last year from Endicott who was specializing in reading. And so we literally, she was a certified teacher and certified special ed teacher. She was just going in her fifth year to receive her master's in reading, and she was phenomenal. And so we were able, last year, we had two interventionists. So I am going to say that it's, it's tough with just one. Because like I said, she does literacy and math, and we have three, about three hundred and twenty-five students at MOLIN this year. Not that they all need intervention. We have a number of action items that are all in our school improvement plan. I believe, I think we'll present in February an update on that because it's a two-year plan. We are using a number of programs. The rewards and keys to literacy are new. The teachers were feeling like we needed some more work around word study and vocabulary. This came from the teachers. They did the work with Emily on researching programs, and they chose rewards and keys to literacy. So this is brand-new to us, but they are implementing rewards. I observed it in the classroom. It's pretty thorough. It does help a lot with the spelling piece, which we see can be a challenge for some students. And then you've heard of SRSD, STEM Scopes were in our first official year. We've done some great work with Eureka Math, and some amazing differentiation is happening in, in the MOLIN classrooms with Eureka Math and splitting off into groups. Our, we continue to work on STAR 360 because it is such a big, it's such a huge database, and it does so many different things. So it doesn't just give you information on kids that need to improve. It gives information on your student that might be at an eighth-grade reading level, and it will even say what skills that student is able to work on next. It also has a huge, a huge resources from all over that teachers can go in and say, all right, I need some, I need some ideas for my, like, highest readers. What can I do to challenge them? And they can go into STAR 360, and they can find a number of resources for the kids to work on. And then we are continuing to work on best practices, and providing safe and supportive schools. If you, David, I'm sure you, being an educator, there's a lot out there right now about the impact of trauma on learning. I, every time I turn on the news, there's an article about it. It is a huge piece that we're realizing impacts students' ability to access their academics. So we do need to actually, we do need to address the social-emotional for most, for many kids, to be able to get them to reach their academic potential. And a lot of that is through our professional development and a number of research-based programs and student learning opportunities. We had a partnership with Leslie where we, Leslie is kind of leading the way on the impact of trauma on learning, and they've done amazing work around it, and we've had many teachers take those courses. Questions, because I could just keep talking about what we're doing.
Knowing that you only have one interventionist, do we also have a coach, like someone who could, because...
That's a great question. I saw that, you commented on that.
With students, as, especially if there's a chance student need grows or student trauma level grows, which all trends are pointing to, yes.
Yes.
We're going to run out of interventionist space.
David, I'm the coach.
What's that?
I said, I'm the coach.
I know you're the coach.
No, 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 we don't, we don't, I, I'm kind of being, I'm being funny, but like, we don't have that, we don't have a coach as a position. So primarily, what Kristin does is, there is some pullout. There is a lot of going into class and working in small groups. I have seen her in-class teaching lessons as well, though. So there is some modeling that goes on there. Emily and Liz and I do a lot of work at staff meetings, talking about, here's, you know, tier-one interventions that can happen in your classroom. This is what, you know, we want you to be doing. But we don't have coaches as positions. So when I said that I'm the coach, I just meant it in terms of, like, you know, we...
It's something to think about because if we're going to continue to rely on differentiation for teachers to reach a broader and broader spectrum of kids, they're going to need some support and know-how.
So I would be looking to...
It would be lovely.
Our budget discussions.
As budget season, you know?
Yes.
Maybe that's something to think about.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I think ZERN obviously is, we don't want the kids staring at the screen or looking from the screen, so...
Right, and I think, you know, I, I mean, I, I think our teachers use as many possible resources as they can to help in terms of interventions. ZERN is a fabulous program. It aligns right with the Eureka Math. But no, it's not, it's not a person. So, yeah, yeah. I agree, we need more people.
I just have a question. Is ZERN a computer program that they're taking?
Yes, yes. So ZERN, it aligns exactly with Eureka Math, but one of the good pieces of it is that if we need to, if a student needs, like, remediation for a skill, we can, they can do that on ZERN. So some teachers really use it when they're doing math in, in stations. Like, they'll, they'll have the students in groups. So one group might be, might be doing an extension, while another group might be doing some remediation work on ZERN, and the teachers can go in and see what they're doing.
Right.
And when they're doing those groupings, too, it does allow for the teacher to rotate through. So it doesn't make up for, like, what a coach could do, like, an additional person. I think they, they use it wisely in terms of they're able to monitor it. If a student needs help on a third-grade concept, they can, ZERN can be bumped down to third grade, but it doesn't show that it's third grade, so we're not, you know, because the student self-esteem is a huge piece, obviously.
Right, but I would imagine, too, you're a lot, you're probably getting some pretty good data from there that, that you could also...
Yes, absolutely.
Drive instruction from there.
Yes, yes, and Lexia as well. That's, you know, that focuses on literacy. That's been used by us, you know, by all of our schools for a number of years. And, yeah, we can get great data from that as well. Is that it? Thank you.
So we're looking at literacy data for current sixth graders and last year's fifth-grade MCAS on the left. You'll see that the next three graphs look quite similar in our grade six, seven, and eighth grade. So we have close to sixty percent meeting, meeting expectations or exceeding expectations here in this year's seventh graders. So on the left, we have sixth-grade MCAS. So totaling about fifty-six percent of students. It looks like a drastic difference, but seventy-three percent represents about seven students different, reaching it, and STAR in the fall. And then here is eighth grade. Eighth grade showing fifty-seven percent meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS. And sixty-six percent on STAR. Let's see, our, we have a larger majority meeting the standard at the middle-school grades. Many of our students, close to forty percent, thirty-five percent, are almost meeting standards. And what you see in MCAS at this stage is that students are moving from open-response-type answers, which do require writing skill, to more of an essay, which is a much higher level of expectation. I mentioned earlier that students are asked to look at multiple texts at once. That is the standard in middle school, that you're looking at multiple extensive texts and answering questions that respond to them at the same time. So a common theme across the text. It's, it's much more difficult. So teachers are working on individual text selection for students and helping students stretch and reach those higher, complex texts regardless of their current level of reading and writing. They're working harder at finding ways to bring multiple texts into students' learning and comprehension.
So similar to what we've said before, so these are matching up the STAR and the MCAS data. And something that I've spent some time, and I know Emily and Lisa and Tim have also spent time with grade-level teams, looking at math or literacy and trying to make sense of where the gaps might be in the, in the curriculum. So we're not, we're certainly looking at the cohorts of kids and the kids that are the most struggling. But when it comes to overarching comments about where the gaps might be in curriculum, that's something that the MCAS is really good at telling us. And that's something that's also very good, that STAR can also be very good at. So I just have a couple of reflections. On the sixth grade...
On the sixth-grade STAR and MCAS data, we're seeing that students are really strong in finding rational numbers and using, manipulating rational numbers. So that's positive and negative numbers. And we're seeing that we've still continued to have some struggles in geometry in grade six and grade eight. We did do some work in grade seven or in grade six last year and that those scores showed that our kids and the rising seventh graders did better on geometry because of some interventions and some work that they were doing in sixth grade in their classrooms. We see in grade seven that positive is again integers, the number system, positive and negative numbers, rational numbers. And we're seeing that there is a dip or some gaps in their probability and statistics understanding. So that's something that we've talked with the grade leveled and the department teams to see if we can find ways of reorganizing things so that we're sure that we tackle those standards. And then in eighth grade, we see that students are doing well in functions. So that's another number system piece and that they're able to use functions and they're able to compare things using data, tables, and graphs. So, and then there's some, some struggles again in geometry, especially around using the Pythagorean theorem to find areas of triangles and non-traditional shapes. So those are some of the things that we've worked on as departments to see if we can try and close some of the gaps around just systemic issues we have from grade to grade and from building to building. This is the, these are the same graphs that you guys have seen before, which is the ELA and math scores in the district as well as compared to the state in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And one of the reasons why we're not using, as Angela and Emily have said, any longitudinal data is because these tests have been different for the last several years. So hopefully going forward, we'll be able to use more of the, the test data that we have on cohorts of kids, which has always been kind of an important thing when we look at the trends going forward. Oh, yeah. Science, again, we've got, you know, we'd love it if the kids would do a little bit better, but we also know that, that this type of a test is, you know, isn't maybe the best way for us to assess how our kids are doing, you know, in terms of being able to think like a scientist. So, yeah, I'd love it if the, if the test data was better, but I also know that, that we're doing a lot of really good work in science and this might not be that reflective of how our kids are learning and how engaged our kids are with science.
It's an improvement over past years, though. It's a different test, but we are seeing improvement in grades.
Is there any, is that test going to stay the same? Or is there plans to tweak that test? I don't, yeah, I don't know, I was just curious.
Yeah, you know, Sean, I wish I knew. As far as we've been told, there's no, there's no plans to change the test right now, but, you know, that's always, we usually get a word that it's being considered, you know.
Right, I mean, they usually have some sort of pilot or something before that.
And then we had nothing, there's been nothing. I think they're still working to refine this test, actually. It's still going to be in the second year of this year.
Right.
Lisa.
So we're, we're trying to use the data to inform our strategic planning initiative of reimagining teaching and learning. And just using this data as a starting point, being that it's a new set of data and it's a place to start, one of the ways that we designed our professional development throughout the course of the year is sort of hanging our hat on the thinking of a guy named John Hattie, whose program is called Visible Learning. And his research is all about teacher impact. And so it's a really nice place, I think, for us to pull together, let's look at our data, where are our students at, and think deeply about what is the greatest teacher impact? He uses big kind of metacognitive analysis to look at what are the types of strategies that have largest impact. And the good news of some of Hattie's research is that very little things that we do in school have a negative impact. So that's a nice place for us to start. But as teachers, one of the things that we can learn from Hattie is there are some areas that have a really great impact. So if you have limited resources, limited time, you have data that you know you want to improve on, where are you going to expend your energy? And some of the key areas of greatest impact that Hattie has found from his research are student self-assessment of their grades, student reflection, and student-teacher relationships. So a big part of our professional development has been like tying together our faculty meetings and our early-release days with the theories of Hattie, also throwing in a little bit of design thinking, trying to get ourselves out of the box in terms of how we're approaching addressing, increasing student learning and increasing our impact. So putting those two ideas together towards a professional development model that is all geared towards making an impact on student learning, making an impact on our student data. To that end, we have a number of PLCs that are doing a variety of different work on their curriculum and instruction. Specific, let's say, for example, in our ELA area, one of the areas that teachers have concerns about are, are students taking the whole student feedback loop and they are experimenting with teacher conferencing. And in addition, at the same time, adding in this idea of like you have a teacher conference or you pass back a written document, in our case mostly it's Google Document, with some teacher comments. Are kids then integrating that feedback to the next iteration of their writing? And I think what our teachers are finding is like a lot of times, no, probably not. So is there a way to get them a little bit more empowered of setting their own goals for their own writing, tracking their own feedback in these teacher conferences? And so one of our PLCs has actually a whole form that they came out of last early-release day with that they're going to be using for students setting their own writing goals and tracking them, excuse me, as well. So that's kind of like a big picture of like where we're looking at the NOC data, both from STAR perspective and also from the MCAS perspective, and trying to use that data to guide also our important work of strategic planning of how are we reimagining teaching and learning in our school. Within that, lots of little small details of really specific actions are happening. Do I just click right? So let me start with the success story piece. Although parts of our science scores are not growing at the rate that we would like to see them grow, and I'll just add one piece to what Liz and Angela were saying. We have a new textbook series. We also have what has been, from the state, a reconfiguration of the flow, scope, and sequence of science strands. Our current seventh graders, by the time they get to eighth grade, will be our first cohort that we'll have gone through with the brand-new text series and a fully configured scope and sequence that hasn't shifted while they're in their three-years, three-year.
Cycle.
Cycle, thank you. So I'm excited to see what their scores look like at the end of that. I'm hoping that that will make an impact. I also think that what is making an impact is we're seeing that our, this technology and engineering strand is scoring relatively well. And I think we're feeling really good about a variety of different approaches that have been funded by the NEF and looking at our STEM, increasing our opportunities both in the exploratory class of engineering and connecting that to our science classrooms and also uniquely in our eighth grade to our social studies classrooms. So we're using an idea of a makerspace model where students use a design thinking process to address problems beyond just engineering problems. So our tech engineering teacher is working with our social studies teachers in eighth grade on a project that they do where they design monuments to a civil rights project. So there's been some nice connections across the disciplines that we think are paying off in some of these scores because they're having iterations of tech engineering standards across a variety of different disciplines in different places. We hope to keep increasing that makerspace kind of approach to teaching tech engineering. Fits really well with our design thinking model as well.
Can you explain that?
Makerspace? Yeah, so that's kind of like an ed jargon, comes from the engineering world of, it's not just creating a space, although that's a big piece of it, a space where you can open your thinking, a space where you might approach a problem in a totally different way, a space where it might be very student-generated, so the problem is just put out there and the kids approach it in a lot of different ways. There's no really one way to go about makerspace. The Mullen also is using a makerspace model and they actually have carts. So to be very concrete about it, like in the Mullen School, you might be able to just bring a cart into your school that has like drills, hammers, lots of different materials that kids can create and prototype ideas with. In the NOC, we have those carts as well funded by the NEF. They can come up and around to the classrooms. So when the students are doing their monuments to the civil rights, they might have an idea of doing a 3D printing, they might also have an idea of doing a flat drawing, and the art teacher will support them with that. So it's bringing all the different disciplines together to make more of a three-dimensional approach to understanding. Does that make sense?
Yes. And one of the benefits, too, of that is that we're asking kids to use authentic math. So math as, as a tool to help solve some of these problems. So it gives kids really a strong reason to want to solve these problems using, you know, using math that they know and if they don't know it, finding out how to solve those problems. So it really is a completely integrated approach.
I also have up there the GOME CPI. So essentially what we're trying to do with all of our curriculum development is get a little bit outside of the box. How does this fit with our MCAS data? Well, we still need to be accountable to that data, so we're going to be looking really carefully about what's the impact of these new types of lessons on our standardized data. So action number one is really just talking a lot about what I've just been speaking to. We're going to continue to work with our PLCs. Teachers were asked to prototype some new big idea or lesson by our February early-release day, so that will be an opportunity for us as a NOC community to hear from all the teaching staff on what they've, what they've tried, how it's gone for them, what have been successes and failures. Within that, and I just put that math example up there that Liz really already spoke to, within all of this like big idea thinking is also some really concrete stuff going on, like people experimenting with word generation, which is a vocabulary strategy. Vocabulary is another one of those high-impact areas that Hattie talks about. We have people trying to develop further their accountable talk in the classroom because, again, dialogue, talking, students not going through a whole school day without ever speaking is really another high-impact area of Hattie. So different people are sort of approaching that in different directions and, again, trying to be grounded with how's this impacting our student learning? How can we make their learning visible to them and make them a little more empowered about it? We also continue to extend the use of STAR 360 under really the leadership of both Tara and Liz in the NOC. They have had a couple of years under their belt at the Mullen School, so we're rolling up to the NOC. Our sixth-grade teachers started using it last year. Liz and Emily facilitated a couple of half-day PD work with them so they could dig deeper into what is the data, what does it show us, what doesn't it show us, what more do they need to know? And we've rolled out to our seventh and eighth grade this year, so we'll continue to, to work on that. We also have an interventionist who similarly to the Brezner Hannah-Mullen models is doing both push-in and pull-out for the NOC schedule. Our pull-out happens during the flex block and it can be a variety of interventions, some of it around executive function, skills, and strategies, some of it really specifically targeted by scores that we're getting on both the MCAS and STAR 360 for math and ELA interventions. And this year, in particular, she's piloting some push-in work in the seventh-grade ELA classroom and that's been really interesting to see how that, how that works as well. And then lastly, continuing our work that we're doing as a district, also as a part of our strategic planning around social-emotional growth. Like both K through eight, we're all together working on a PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Strategy. And although that may not be directly tied to our curriculum, I think it is very directly tied to our students' ability to learn and feel safe in the school and have us have a consistent positive environment in school in terms of our culture and how we approach discipline and how we celebrate students who are doing the right thing every day, just quietly minding their own business. So, that's the end. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Mike and Trish?
Okay, so we're going to take a look at the literacy scores for grade 10. And I want to remind everybody that the MCAS exam at the high school level is still the legacy test. The test for the high school level has not been changed yet. It's the, what we would refer to as the old MCAS or the legacy. So this is the same MCAS test that our students have been taking for some time. So this shows you our high school ELA versus the state. This slide gives you an indication of our math scores in grade 10. And Mike is going to speak to this a little bit because this is, this is the first time in a while that we have seen this many students in a struggling level at our high, in our 10th-grade math. And I think it has a lot to do with some of the changing demographics of some of our struggling learners. And so we're working with that and Mike's, Mike will speak about that a little bit further. And then, as you know, the way things are broken out for science at the high school is our students take the Biology MCAS test in ninth grade and then they have an opportunity to re, if they don't pass that test, they have an opportunity to retake science and they can take it in any one of the domains in 10th grade. So our state comparison data is always done at 10th grade rather than ninth. So this is, these are our ninth-grade biology scores, which we're very pleased with. And then this gives you the look at a 10th-grade level that includes the ninth-grade biology scores as when, as well as any of the other science tests that have been taken at the high school level in comparison with the state. And this data has improved significantly over the last several years in our high school science scores. And I'm going to let Trish talk to you a little bit more about some of this data. Happy to do it?
Want me to talk about the MCAS first?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
I'll do the MCAS first. One of the things we did notice this year, which was different than we have ever had in the 11 years I've been here, is the number of students who are in warning in math. We usually have a handful of students, three to five, three to six. Last year, we had 10. And so for us, that was a, a critical look and need in saying, you know, what, what happened? Who are these students? What's their background? And then how can we bring them sort of up to speed over the next year so that when they retake the MCAS math, that they will be, they will be successful? So we have taken those students and we have put them into much smaller math settings with a special ed teacher that is also math-certified. We have two sections going right now and we are targeting those students in a much more individual. more individualized way in these smaller group settings than we would be able to in a class of 25. And so our hope is that we meet the needs of those students over this year so that when they do take the MCAS math retest that they will be successful. These scores, except for that one area in the math, are pretty consistent with what we have seen over the last decade at Newburyport High School. We've seen improvement in ELA to the point where we now are, you know, ninety, high ninety percent of students who are either advanced or proficient. We are in an area where we have our science scores much improved from even where we were five years ago. I think teachers have spent a lot of time looking at curriculum, targeting the curriculum, meeting the state standards, teaching a little bit differently. You know, our kids at Newburyport High School write a lot, and that's because we have very good class sizes that allows our teachers to really give students a lot of writing because when they give students a lot of writing, they've got to do a lot of grading. And if you've got classes of 30 or 32 kids, that teacher's just not going to be able to keep that pace up if they have classes of 20 or 22. So having very, very good class size, to me, has been very, very important in how our students do on the standardized test that they take. Trish?
Yeah?
First of all, any questions on MCAS? This will be a whole new ballgame because this is the last year that our students are taking the legacy test. The state has told us that we are going to randomly choose 25% of this year sophomore class and they're going to take the next-generation MCAS, or I still refer to it as PARC, that's just my bias. But they will, yeah, 25% of our 10th grade students will be taking the next-generation MCAS with a computer as opposed to a paper pencil test that we've traditionally done.
Are they being held accountable?
Math, yes. And then the following year...
Congratulations requirement.
What's that?
For those 25 schools who are being picked, are they being held accountable as a graduation requirement?
Good question. We don't have all the answers yet. We just got one blurb from them, what, three weeks ago?
Yeah. This is, my understanding is this is their way of testing the new test, so I don't think this would be...
This year will be the next year.
Right.
Any questions on MCAS before we get to other data?
So other than math, you're seeing good trends?
Yes, and even in math, I mean, except for that one area, you know, that's a little higher than what we've normally seen, our scores, I think, are pretty good.
But you talk about the small handful of students that haven't been successful yet with the math part, taking them out into, giving them the support they need. Is there any, anything that we can or should learn about demographics? Is that changing? How is that changing?
You know, it's difficult for me to stand up here and talk in group students in any way, but we do have a growing ELL population, so we are, we have those students that we need to kind of wrap our arms around a little bit earlier in the process. And one of the things we're going to talk about with you in a few minutes is that we need to work better with the NOC teachers and administration to identify students coming into the high school as opposed to dealing with it after the fact to try to get to these students earlier so that they can be successful on whatever exam that they're taking. We have some students that come to us that have not been in school for a period of time and then they've been put at Newburyport High School, and then we, you know, we need to work with those students and work with that program a little bit better to identify needs of those students also. And I'll echo what my colleagues have said about the social-emotional impact of what we're dealing with as schools. It has drastically changed over the last five or six years. It continues to be something that I think, and I'm lucky, I have two adjustment counselors in my building, I could use a third. And I think Trish would echo that in a heartbeat. She's already getting on my case over here as we look at budget, what the needs are for our students, and we're finding that the social-emotional component is something that is real and it affects kids every day, and it affects some of the kids that are in the blue and purple areas, definitely. Anything else on MCAS?
I wanted to, you had a little sticky note on the thing about attendance for the students that are in the, we have the fundamentals of math and foundations of math there. One is a sub-separate for special education students only, and one is a regular class for students who have not been successful on the MCAS. So one of the things that, you know, in terms of demographics and other issues that do come up is attendance. It's attendance for some of these students, and we've tried to put some supports in place for kids around their attendance, but I think, Liz, you know, we did some of that STAR testing on a couple of our EL students right in math, and I think their level came up to like third grade point nine, 3.9. That's what they were coming in with in their 16 and 17 years old. So it makes it difficult, and they also don't have great attendance because they have, they watch out for siblings. I mean, there's things going on in their lives. We also have a sort of transient population of students who live in, I think it's called Hopewell Now, the Dare Family House, where they, almost none of them stay for four years at Newburyport High School. So that small group of people, attendance is an issue. They have, some of them already have a baby, and unfortunately the stories are, you know, babies are in ICU, things happen. So we don't, we have a lot of students who have, you know, interruptions in their education that come to us, so we have supports, we have places, you know, we're working with our academy program with Harley and the teachers up there to try to really sort of wrap ourselves around some of these kids to help them be successful as it gets harder as they get older, as you know. We don't have a lot of, you know, we don't want to dangle for them to stay.
I'll talk about AP.
You want to?
Yeah, you can talk about the others. You know, our AP program continues to grow. Mayor, I don't know if you remember, we go back maybe six years ago, we brought in an outside consultant to talk to us about increasing, and we kind of said, whoa, that really doesn't fit our school, but I think we have a way of doing that, just give us a couple of years to do that. And I think if you look at, A, number of students over the last four years that are in AP classes at Newburyport High School, and then the number of exams that students are taking, increasing over 100 over the last four years, you're seeing that we have increased our number of students that are taking AP classes and the number of exams that were given. We're finding it difficult now to find adequate space for our students to take the AP exams.
Just look at the space. I like this space.
So, yeah, I'm looking at it.
I'm looking at this space. That's the other thing I was doing on the, we could do MCAS.
We could do AP here. But our AP stats, which, our AP stats, we've increased from two classes to three, two years running. AP Psychology, we started offering it, we offered one section last year, we're already up to two. And so, you know, we targeted some courses that we thought would be more for the non-traditional advanced placement student to take. We're looking at specifically AP Environmental and looking at AP Psychology, and I think you look at those numbers there, and one of the reasons you've seen that increase is that we've added these classes into our curriculum. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have increased the number of students in exams, and we also, our scores are pretty awesome. My philosophy with AP is that any students that wants to challenge themselves should be given the opportunity to take an advanced placement course. Now, what that does mean however, conversely, is that sometimes you're going to get a student who's going to struggle to get a one or a two, and that doesn't mean that they're not trying, it's very, very difficult, it's a set curriculum, it's college-level materials that we're asking our students to prepare for. But, you know, I've got some crackerjack teachers teaching those classes, I've got very, very strong individuals who, you know, are very passionate about the subject matter that they're teaching, want to see their students get a three, four, or five on an exam. And, you know, we're up there as far as the testing scores that our students produce taking our advanced placement. And that's a testament, I think, to our teachers, we take it very seriously. There's a set curriculum they have to follow. I know that, you know, whenever there's interruptions in our schedule, the first thing I think about is how does this affect my AP teachers and the AP classes? How much time are they losing? And how much time can we possibly gain back, which we never are able to do? But that's one of the first things that I take a look at when we have snow days and things that interrupt what we do on a daily basis.
Mike, if I can just add to that, you know, when we made the decision that we were going to expand AP offerings, you know that that will include a wider range of students, but the research behind that tells us that even a student who scores a one or two on an AP exam does better when they get to college. And so it's really beneficial for students, even if they're not scoring in the three-to-five range and getting college credit for that class, the experience itself has set them up for better success when they get to the college level.
Questions on AP?
What did, there was a try, is there some type of certification you get with AP?
Yeah, you're a honor roll, like on an honor roll? Yeah, we've been there three years in a row. Yeah.
Miss Blind, did the people really talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have been. Right, that's true. There's a big poster right outside my office.
I know, I think we should talk to our reporter from the Daily News and make sure that that gets reported out also.
I guess I just have to point out the three courses where 100% of the students take the course.
Is that one of your courses?
Yeah, I've got a three to five.
The government and politics, is that your course? No?
No, it's, uh, not Washington. From the US.
And US History.
Yeah.
So a question for that, the US?
Well, they don't let anybody in.
More on physics too, which I would imagine a few people...
Unless they really want to.
Right. That and the English.
Physics you're not taking just to try in AP.
Right, that and the English language and comp, those are like expert tests, those are the kids who really want to do it. The two history courses, that's commendable to get.
It's outstanding. It's unbelievable. You know, when the scores come out, I'm second getting to looking at the scores. The teachers are first, they get in there before I do, and, you know, this is not an uncommon, you know, we could go back and look at previous years and you're going to see 100% for some of those courses, year after year after year. And that's just, again, a testament to the teaching abilities that we have in the classroom, the teachers making sure that the students are taking this very seriously and getting through a very, very difficult curriculum. US History is a lot of area to cover and not a lot of time to do it, and so to be able to do that and see the test results here is pretty commendable.
Do they take that their first time through US History, or do they take US History and then go back and?
They take US History, they take the three-year program, and then they take US in addition. Yeah, it's not, it's not, doesn't, what's that?
They take a year, three semesters of World, and then one semester of US and then one year of AP.
One year of AP US, yeah.
Do you restrict the number of AP classes that any student can take?
At currently, we do not. That's becoming problematic as Trish and I deal with students who have, you know, we've counseled and said, you know, you shouldn't, you really shouldn't be taking four, you really shouldn't be taking five, and no, I can do it, and then come, you know, October, November, and it's like, I can't do it. And so we've been dealing a little bit with that. There are schools that limit. You know, I like to look at it on a case-by-case basis because...
We have students who can do five.
I've got students that have done five and have, you know, have handled it, I don't know how, but they've handled it without a problem, and doing, you know, three sports and doing theater on top of it, so, and working.
It's very individual for students. I mean, pretty much when we meet with students and teachers recommend, and we go through, meaning we, the guidance counseling staff, we go through and they look at all the kids, you know, what they're recommended for, because, you know, Mr. Stern might be recommending someone for AP US, and then someone else is recommending for math, you know, they get four different teacher recommendations, and we sort of have that information when we're meeting with the students, and we say, you know, do you really think you need four classes, four APs or five, and, you know, really what is your interest? And part of the reason why, you know, the conversation came up about the whole class rank is because we know APs are weighted higher, and kids were taking APs just to get the higher weight, not because they really were interested in the subject. But, oh, I can take, you know, they were planning it all out, if I take this AP and this AP and I can get a higher GPA than the person next to me, and it's like, well, don't do it for that, do it because you want to learn. So when they start doing that, the kid who takes five, oftentimes it's because they want to learn. So that's what we hope for.
Yeah, I just want to point out one other, I mean, I think probably the biggest, the best increase that I've seen in the years that I've been here is in our biology scores. You know, that's pretty outstanding compared to where we were five or six years ago. You know, we were not even at 50% getting a three, four, or five, so I think, you know, that's pretty outstanding improvement. You know, teachers all go to AP training, some have gone to be a second kind, just to get a refresher. And again, that says a lot about the teachers that are teaching those classes to try to stay current with what, you know, the tests are evolving, the curriculum's evolving, it's not always, you know, it's not always ever the same, and so they try to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak, by taking part in professional development that usually happens in the summertime where they're giving up, you know, their time in the summer to stay current with the curriculum and with the AP program.
So what do you do in a situation where you have one student?
That was a virtual high school class.
It's just a test. This year, well, actually, last year and this year, we have another two taking the AP Computer Science, and they're working together, which is really nice.
We good?
Excellent.
All right. It's yours.
Okay, so, you know, there's two standardized tests, most colleges accept either or, and for years and years and years, this part of the country always did the SAT, and now the ACT is becoming a much more popular test amongst our students and other students in the Northeast, partly because it's a different type of test, there it's not as reading-heavy as the SAT. The SAT has changed a little bit over the last couple of years, I think they're trying to do, look a little bit more like the ACT, but it's still not. So our kids are savvy enough to know that they can send either test score, so they're, they've decided that they're going to take them both, and whichever one looks better, they send off to the colleges. So because of that, we applied this year, I applied, just waiting a year back, to become a host school to do the ACT so our kids could take them right at Newburyport High School because it is a lot more comfortable. They'd rather, they like taking the SAT at Newburyport, so I don't know if we'll get it because I think it's going to depend on how many students actually take the test in this area. Will it make sense for us to become a host school? But I will keep you all posted when we hear we've become a test center. Look, I just got a thing of 32 kids, which is a lot, took the ACT in one sitting as opposed to like two a couple of years ago, so it's good. So these are our overall scores for, mean scores for the SAT, how many, you know, we have more kids take it in 2017. So the critical reading, the writing of the math, obviously are all theirs.
The test changed?
The test changed, so it's now called evidence-based reading and writing, so that's the 5.91 versus the 5.50, so our kids have done better in the new SAT also. And so the subject tests, so the SAT twos are the tests that students take to really show their knowledge in a specific subject area, it's a shorter test and it's really just that subject. It's a shorter test and it's really just that subject. So you can take the, uh, different biologies. There's, I think there's 22 potential SAT two sub, uh, tests that you can take. And these are the tests that our students, um, have taken and how they're, again, doing So here's our ACT data. As you can see, so in 2017, 32 students took it and then, uh, tests prior to October of 2015, we had two. So it's real, like I said, it's becoming more popular. These are, are the scores, the middle 50%, the means of the highest composite that you can get is a 36. Um, somewhere in the high 20 range would be equivalent to probably around a 1,200 SAT if you're doing the old thing, so.
So what we have kind of analyzed, looking at all of the data that we have, is that our special education, low-income and ELA student populations are the ones that we need to focus on whom are struggling with the MCAS testing. Um, we, again, uh, students not attending school is another big factor that, that we are working on constantly with our counselors, with our adjustment counselors, uh, with our teachers. We, again, you know, our MCAS ELA scores are, are really significantly above state averages. Um, you know, um, again, our math scores, with the exception of, of the number of students who did not do well this past, uh, year, which to me, we'll, we'll see after this year if that was just a one-year anomaly or is this a trend? But, you know, our students are doing really well, um, on the, uh, MCAS legacy test. We've, you know, had students, more students taking our AP tests, SAT tests. Trish is pushing the ACT, becoming a host school. So, you know, there, there's, there's some conclusions up there that we need to do a better job of, of actually working with, um, the eighth-grade teachers and, and the NOC to identify students at an earlier, um, at an earlier time, uh, coming into the high school. And, um, it's going to be interesting to see, because we've been so consistent with our MCAS scores, uh, when our students take the next-generation MCAS, what those scores look like, I think, will, will give us a base to operate from because we've, we've been at a baseline of pretty high achievement over the last, uh, number of years.
Just say one more thing.
Yep, sure.
Um, I, this year, the guidance office and the, um, counseling office, so there's an adjustment council intern from, is she finally, the guidance one is from UMass Boston in the, the master's program. So, um, I don't know where Krista's from, sorry. They have been, one of the, the projects I gave them is they took the eighth-grade students from last year, we got their attendance, and any student who had more than 10 absences in, for the semester, so more than 20 for the year, that came from the middle school. We have had tho, uh, both Krista and Tony meeting with them to try to make a connection and get them invested back in school. So that's one of the things that we're sort of trying this year, piloting with them, like, how, how can we get to these kids early, you know, in high school? Because we know that that's one of the biggest, you know, warning indicators of students dropping out is their attendance freshman year. So I don't have, I, I, I won't have that data for you until after this year to see how they're doing, but I think so far, so good. Better attendance than they had last year, so far. Um, there was another one of our ELA students, so last year she had, um, she was on track to have 26 absences per semester. Um, and this semester, she's only had 17. So I know that sounds like a lot of absences, but it's a nice shift from last year. And if she continues with that, it'll be a decent percentage of, of sort of try. And I, I, I have one counselor working only with, um, all of the AL students and all of the DARE students. So it's just one person and so she can connect, um, we, almost weekly with them. So, not going to, it'll help, but I won't have any of that data until next year. So just wanted to tell you about that success story.
I do.
Oh, action.
Um, action items, um, we need to continue to refine our, our fundamental math courses to target our students struggling, uh, in math, collaborating again with the, um, NOC math teachers and ELA teachers. Um, and then, you know, as a, as a community, we're going to have to allow the high school, like the other schools, time to adapt to the next-generation testing. Um, you know, we did a pilot program a couple of years ago with the state and, you know, one of the things we found out was that our, our students needed to read, um, more texts, they needed to read more nonfiction, they needed to read more primary source materials. And when I go into classrooms to do observations and walkthroughs, I'm seeing that our teachers continue to grow that out from that, uh, test that was done with us a couple of years ago. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction and I think we'll see good results at the high school as we transition to the next-generation online MCAS testing.
I have another answer to one of the yellow stickies. So it was about the Spanish program and when do we see us bringing back either AP Spanish or Spanish five at the high school?
Actually, it was about, you guys have written about Spanish.
Right, we had written about, um, the fact that they've added, um, oh, sorry, inter-
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
Sorry. We have the Spanish one program happening, or the Spanish one with the middle school. So this year, we have, um, six students who placed into Spanish two coming out of either the IC, River Valley, or the NOC, um, either in honors, Spanish two or Spanish two. So we, we only have five. So it's going to take a few years to build it up so that we, when more kids start.
Right, but this year they didn't have the second Spanish teacher as well.
Correct.
So-
Yeah.
Right, so-
Assuming those, I, I guess my question was, at the NOC, there was uncertainty as to whether or not that that was actually a goal?
Oh.
For the, for the two, for the increase Spanish to become Spanish one or even potentially become Spanish one, there hasn't, there hasn't been agreement on whether or not that that's-
But I think it depends on curriculum.
Yeah.
But we also have kids who, who, um, if they do well and have a-
Well, obviously, we've always had those, I'm just curious.
No, but I mean, we haven't had them coming out of the middle school in a long time.
It is our expectation that over two years, I hope that Martin, they will complete the Spanish one course, which should take us two years to get to.
Don't, it might be a dispatch.
That's going to mean a revision of the current Spanish curriculum at the high school to reflect that change at the, at the-
I think that's ultimately the goal, that we'll get there. I don't know when that will be, but we are-
I would say in the next two years.
I'd go, maybe three.
Maybe three.
Three.
Let's go with three.
Let's go with two.
So I, I mean, I like that. That was, that was the most clear and optimistic version of that conversation we've heard yet. So that's good. It's progress.
Good?
Thanks.
We're good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Really, really well done. Great in-depth presentation. Appreciate all of your time, presentations. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The presentation, we can post it.
Sure.
No, Amy, um, I should have announced that at the beginning of the meeting. Amy has the flu-
Okay.
And is home pretty ill, which is why she is not here tonight.
Or do we just want to review it as a committee?
I think you probably want to review it as a committee and take a look at it. And then if there are questions, I can bring those back to work.
Okay, all right.
Are you prepared?
Oh, you are? Outstanding.
Yeah, I'm prepared.
All right, thank you. Well, our next item is, uh, actually, our next item is the, uh, first reading of school calendar options in 2018, 2019. Uh, it is a first reading. I understand it's three options. Would you care to highlight any of those options, superintendent?
Um, yes, I would, I would tell you that the leadership team is in favor of either option two or option three. Um, one of the things that I have for you, which I think that you're going to need to take some time, um, Brian had sent me some questions on, um, Friday. We were out on, we were out yesterday, so I, I have the data for you tonight. So you're probably going to want to look at, uh, this data and kind of fully, um, analyze it because it has to do with the early release absences.
Do you have a digital copy of that or is it just paper?
Um, I brought paper tonight. There is a digital copy of it as well that I can forward.
I'm sorry, Susan, you said leadership is in favor of either the second or the third option?
Second or the third.
Okay. Which essentially means before Labor Day.
Before Labor Day. And the decision, the big change on, on two and three is the early release days-
Thursdays and Fridays.
Continue, they're on Thursdays and Fridays. And I wanted you to have the data in terms of the absences. Um, but, but it really does take some time to look at this and to, to analyze it, so if there are other questions on the calendar, I'd be happy to answer those.
I'm going to say again, I don't think the Wednesday before Thanksgiving should be part of this because it's not Thursday or Friday at all. And I bet if you looked at many years back, there's tons of absences on that Wednesday because it's a half day and it's a pretty travels, you know?
Yeah, I'm sure of it.
Well, since we just got all this data, I would recommend that we take some time to look at this-
Yeah.
Ask questions, then come back and address this at our next meeting. And the impact that it has on the calendar because that's significant.
Superintendent, would you want committee members to forward you questions by email?
Absolutely. Absolutely, that would be very helpful. Um, the, just, just as a, an aside, and I will send this out as well. The average absence for full day Fridays for 2017, 18 to date has been, um, 93. The average ab, that's the number of students. The average absent for the early release Fridays for 17, 18 was 123. Um, and then the average absent full day Fridays for 16, 17 was 101. But I'll send that to you electronically.
Hmm? Can you just tell me what this front page is? I'm sorry.
Say that again?
Can you?
Yeah, what, what you have there is you have the number of students on our early release days by grade level.
The 2022, that's graduation date.
Correct.
I was up.
We're predicting into the future of how this is.
Sixth grade, sixth grade is 2024. Okay, you've just got it.
Okay, so the, the first page that you have is student data, the second page that you have is staff data. So I wanted you to take a look at both.
Okay.
Superintendent, which is the calendar you're directing? Either the second or the third?
Can you maybe-
Is what the leadership team was in favor of.
Can you maybe tell us a little bit about that, since that's one piece we do have in place right now to think about?
Um, the, the, as I said, the, the major differences are exactly as you said, David. One is, uh, before Labor, before Labor Day for two and three.
I, I'm saying they'd like, for them, the line in the sand was before or after Labor Day. So can you explain to us why the leadership team all wanted after Labor Day or before Labor Day?
Before Labor Day.
Before Labor Day.
Um, I, I think in our discussion, it's, it's, for us, it's about getting the kids in the door, getting the start to the school year, getting out earlier in the summer. That, that has, that's been the history since I've been here. Um, and I don't recall what it was before, before I came, but traditionally, I think many schools, um, if you talk to the, the administration and you talk to the teachers, they do like to get started, uh, before Labor Day. It's a preference. It's absolutely a preference. Um, you know, parents typically like it, but it starts after Labor Day.
After, right.
Yeah. Um, the, the second part to this was simply, you know, when the early release, release days were, that, looking at the data for Thursdays and/or Fridays, so.
To, if I can add, I, I think that, you know, we've had, in the past years, that we started after Labor Days and with the kind of winters we have, sometimes we've ended up running right till the end of June. And, you know, it's hard for everybody at that point. The kids are tired, everybody's tired. Um, we've had to push graduation out because of how late we're running. So all those things went into consideration is what happens in June based on when you start and taking into consideration things that happen throughout the year that push that date out even further.
I mean, we, we average typically the five days for snow days. I mean, that's what we've done pretty consistently over the last five years. So that's the other reason for it, is it does push us further late into the year.
I mean, I know, like, I'm thinking about AP tests because that's the last piece of the conversation, but it's a national test that sometimes students in the struggle in the Northeast actually have fewer school days.
True.
Because you take away a day in December and add it to June, that's a month after the test.
Mm-hmm.
So I've heard people make arguments about that. Truth be told, those arguments also follow with, well, let's start the whole week before Labor Day. Because it's usually the, in fact, most of the comments we got on email said, why bother coming in for a day or two? So which I say, well, why bother coming in for a day or two? Let's-
Yeah, I think the administrators prefer what I would call a soft opening.
And I, I'm saying, I think that's one of the, maybe communication disconnects is what we'll call it with the community, is that people don't understand that soft opening. It seems like a waste. I'm just going off of what, the way people describe it. So I don't think people understand what the value of that is. That's why I'm asking if we can clarify that.
Well, you have to remember that if we start before Labor Day by contract-
Yeah.
That, that Friday is always off, so you're always going to have that anyway because that's in the teacher's contract.
Right.
So i- if you want to bring kids in who haven't been in school for two-plus months, you know, the thinking is, is that they adjust a little bit more slowly and don't have a full, right-back five days, boom. It's just a much gentler way to get kids back into school. And I think it's also, it's also a nod, remember that our youngest kids come in a week after, but our kindergarten first, second, third, you know, particularly for our kindergarten students, it's a way to ease them into it, into what is a big transition for many kids.
And just to break out, we've also talked about that curriculum front-loading professional development days. So like, we could start after Labor Day and have the staff come in before and the calendar still wouldn't push to the end of June if we had snow days, but you didn't like that, either.
Well, I, I can just speak to that. It's not the best way to meet your professional development needs because we are currently planning our March full PD day right now. And there are more needs than we have time for that have, um, arisen as the year has gone, as the year has progressed. So as the year progresses, we are able to determine what some of our professional development needs are as the year goes on. If you front-load, you never have that opportunity to do that. We had, um, a couple of years during the building project where that was done and, you know, missed that time significantly as the year went on because there was never a day where we could have that concentrated time then to really meet the professional development needs that come along as the year comes, as the year goes. So when you front-load, you know, there's benefits to that if you're, uh, rolling out something new and teachers are going to need to get that professional development to be able to roll out something new and a new initiative, there's benefits to front-loading that professional development. But professional development, um, for existing programming and enhancing programming that's there is generally, uh, better if you can do it as the year goes along as it's needed and break it up. break it up throughout the year rather than all at once at the beginning.
Last question, sorry. On the second version where the early release day is on Friday, two of the months, April and May, unlike the other months, those two early release days are not backed up to the holiday weekends in that month. So like in February, the early release day is before the break, and in January, it's before, what would that be, Martin Luther King Day? But in April, it's on the fifth, and in May, it's on the third. So I was wondering if there was a reason why, in Passover parlance, why those two nights are different from all other nights?
No, I don't, I don't think there was any, anything special about, about the, why that was done.
Because I know, like, you know, another thing we hear from parents, and I, I myself as an educator, in apparent consistency, so if we're going to take the time off, do it all at once, sometimes helps. So maybe, could we consider?
So you said that was for February and?
Uh, no, February is right before the vacation, but April and May.
I think the, the issue we've had.
I guess and December is even worse.
Why May? May doesn't matter.
Well, it's just in the middle, like, it's just a random week as opposed to being.
There isn't a week, it's just a day.
As opposed to being right before Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And December actually, so we have the Thanksgiving week and then a week in school, and then there's a week with an early release as opposed to the December day being later in the month, up against the vacation as well. That's all, just trying to avoid the stops and starts.
Is that how this year's calendar is structured looking forward? Is it structured that way this year? Current, the current year?
It, it, yes, yeah, it's been before vacations, yeah.
Each, like, this coming Memorial Day and so on.
I don't know about Memorial.
I don't, yeah, that, that one I'm not sure. I think before.
And I think, I guess now thinking about it, we had talked about June because we have a half-day towards the end of June. There's a lot of, we had a discussion last week as whether or not we could do that half-day either after the year or at the end of the year. So the 13th, on this projected last day, the 13th would be a full day. Is the 14th of June here a full day of school?
Probably not.
Projected last day?
Are you looking at calendar two or?
Calendar two, yes. The 14th of June, projected last day, is that a full day of school?
Probably not.
No. No.
Okay, so.
I think one of the things that we also have to consider is the work that we're doing on those days. I mean, it's not just a half-day, it's a day that we're doing professional work, so oftentimes when we have a release day in June, we're doing a lot of transition work, you know, that are going to impact the decisions that are made before the kids are gone or so it really depends on what the work is. It's more about the work that we're trying to accomplish than ju, that has to be taken into consideration as well as convenience.
I'm just saying, well, so if it's, if it's PLC work where teachers are getting together and they're doing their research or they're presenting something, it shouldn't matter, I wouldn't think, but if you're actually trying to say that we use that day to do something that's going to impact the kids in last week, that's, that's different. That's why I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, a lot of that is transition. It's, you know, students that are moving from having conversa, teachers having conversations, students that are moving from, it could be from Pres to Mullen at that point, from Mullen to the middle school, and staff that get together that actually talk about individual kids and then plan purposes for the fall. So, and that, that happens in really both, I mean, for some of, some of our neediest kids, it happens as early as April. But that is work that does go on in all of our buildings with staff talking to one another.
And that work is important to do before the kids go home in case there are any changes or any?
And it impacts, it impacts student scheduling, which is done over the summer. It impacts placements, we have students in place, so it's all of that.
Okay, so why don't we, if there's further questions or further areas for discussion, if committee members could submit those to the superintendent, we can take up this discussion with the second reading at our next meeting. Sound okay?
Great, seems great.
Thank you for the discussion. And the next item is the pre-K kindergarten tuition. Unfortunately, as mentioned, Miss Sullivan is out sick, not feeling well, we wish her to feel better, so I assume we're going to table that till the next meeting. Oh, that's right. You're prepared to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to walk through it with you if you don't mind because I think this is up for a vote tonight and that's a vote that.
It's a possible vote, yeah.
Possible vote, and I think that's one that Mrs. Sullivan is hoping will happen so that she can move on with some of the work that she needs to accomplish. So you have a, do you want me to do that or do you want to just follow along here? I know you all have a copy, whatever.
There's two copies, there's like a shortened copy.
The short copy is what's being presented tonight.
Okay, all right.
So the longer copy that you receive, Amy wanted you to have so that you had all of the information for your reference, but what really is going to be presented tonight is a much shorter version of that so that you can get the information around what her plans are for the upcoming year. And I, you tell me how you'd like me to present that information, I can do.
Well, I guess I would, you know, I've reviewed the materials as well, and I guess if you could maybe describe how, how much things are the same or how they look differently for their next fiscal year, you know, that would, I think, be complete for me and then allow the committee members to ask questions.
Sure. I think one of the things that we are noticing is a trend of our kindergarten population or birth rates decreasing a bit. And so when you looked at the information that you were given from Amy, you will see that, you know, we're seeing kind of a consistent decrease each year of about the same percentage. Every now and then we'll have a bubble year that varies. So if you look at your slide two, she does a comparison, the birth rate comparisons. And in that, you're going to see that throughout the presentation. So you're going to see that because of that, this year, the projections around what the revenue was going to be for kindergarten was a bit lower because we didn't have the enrollment that we had anticipated. So this year, in presenting, in preparing this presentation, what Amy did for you was she gave you comparisons between a high, an anticipated high number and an anticipated low number in enrollment. So it could range anywhere from 116 students in kindergarten to as high as 132 or 134 students in kindergarten, which would impact the amount of sections that we would need to have of kindergarten. So if we're in that low range, I think anywhere from 116 to 127, we could have seven sections of kindergarten. Anywhere from 128 to 132 or 134, we would need eight sections of kindergarten. So that's going to have a budgetary impact either way. But what she tried to give you were the projections for both so that that can be taken into consideration. She is not recommending an increase in kindergarten tuition this year, but as you will see when you look at the information around preschool, she is recommending an increase in preschool tuition, but only for the five-day preschool situation. So the students who are in the five-day program, she is recommending a $500 increase for that five-day program only. The other change that would happen this year for the five-day program, I mean, for preschool program, is that we are going to go back to the guideline that we used to follow for preschool. If you look at the slide around preschool guidelines, those are set by the state, and you'll see the one that she has highlighted here really states that we would take a maximum of seven students that are on IP's and, and, and keep our group size at 15 students. So that would allow us to enroll eight students. That would be none on IP's with a maximum of seven students on IP's. This year, we went with a maximum of five children on IP's and enrolled more typical students, but Amy found that we didn't have enough room for all of the students that were on IP's that we needed. So she's recommending that we go back to those, that guideline for next year, and the other change for preschool programming would stay the same, but the only other change would be the increase in the, in the tuition for the five-day full-time preschool program. And those students, when you look at the comparisons, Amy's provide you with comparisons for preschool tuition in other districts as well as in private schools. And you'll see that our, that our tuition is lower than most. So particularly when you look at the five-day program, if you compare us to some of the surrounding communities or private programs for a five-day, our, I believe our five-day program is about 32 and a half hours, and if you even look at, say Georgetown, I believe theirs is a 30-hour program, significantly higher than ours. So I think that it's within reason.
Yeah, I think the, I often get a little frustrated with presenting the data on tuition in that way and, and taking a look at what other communities in the area might be doing. Well, it gives you an idea as to whether we're being reasonable or not. Ultimately, what we have to take a look at is if parents are in a situation where they're going to be investing in their childcare, what are the options for being invested? So I, I take a closer look at the private school than what other public school districts are doing. And there, I find that we are, we have room for, for growth in tuition. And I would, I would, you know, I think that, that to me is a no-brainer, I think we have to do it.
And then she summarized everything on your last slide, you know, where she's stating she wants to keep kindergarten tuition rate at the current rate of 3,800.
So why don't we take that vote first? Does that make sense?
We're maintaining the 3,800?
Yeah.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to keep the current kindergarten tuition rate at 3,800 for FY19.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to keep the kindergarten tuition rate at $3,800 for the next fiscal year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The tuition rate for FY19 passes at 38, kindergarten tuition rate passes it for 2000, FY2019 at 3,800 for the year.
Her second recommendation would be to increase the full-day preschool program tuition rate from 7,000 to 7,500.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to increase the FY19 preschool program tuition fee, five-days, full-day program to $7,500. Is there any discussion?
I guess that's a second. Next point, we, we seem way under the radar for comparable choices here in Newburyport, like, almost half of what the Montessori and the children's class will charge.
And that's in West Newbury, but still, a lot of, a lot of Newburyporters go there.
Well, it's not really the same, though. The Y program's all-bay.
Yeah, you take one there.
Seven thirty to five or something.
She, she saw what the hours are there in that chart, too.
Which one of these, is the Y program on this chart?
No.
And that?
The Y program.
Well, my, my kids went to there, that's all I know, and Noel Edge, and that's a full-bay, 7:30 to 5:30 or something, so it's not comparable to eight to three.
Angela, am I just, I might be just missing it, but do they say how many kids this year were in the 32 and a half hour program, five full days?
No, I don't think she did say that, Sean. And.
It might be in the longer presentation.
It might be in the longer presentation.
Oh, it might. I was just on that one.
Yeah.
I was just curious if it was a significant number of kids. I don't.
I think.
I want to say, oh, here.
Yeah, it's in here.
Here it is. The pre, under the proposed preschool tuition.
Okay, yep.
So it would be eight, eight students.
Oh, okay, typical, eight students, okay.
Because the students on IP are, are not paying the tuition.
It also seems a lot, we only have eight kids in full-time preschool?
You can't exceed the 15 students in a class. So those are the guidelines set by the states. You have to be careful, if you have seven students that are on an IP and they're in full day, then the maximum you could accept would be eight tuition-paying students.
Which is why she dropped to seven because we were having too many kids that were on that.
Yes.
Okay.
We want to vote?
We've got a motion seconded, right?
Yeah, it's all set. Just want to make sure there's no further discussion or questions. All those in favor of raising the FY19 pre-K tuition to $7,500, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The tuition passes. Thank you.
And I would just like to thank Amy Sullivan for all the time and energy that she put into both presentations, and she would have done a bang-up job presenting it.
She always does. She always does.
I'm sorry, Amy, that I didn't do what you would do. Did she? Okay.
Mr. Chair, is there, do we have to vote on the third assumption in that too, which is to maintain all other preschool tuition rates at FY18 prices?
I mean, if the committee wants to do that, we can do that.
Maybe we should.
Okay, so that includes, is there a roster of those I could refer to?
Those are.
For a certain page of the presentation?
Slide 10.
Yes. So she would maintain the four-day AM and four-day PM at 3,200 per year. She would maintain the four-day extended learning at 4,400 per year. And she would do the five-day, maintain the five-day extended learning at 5,500 per year.
Okay. So for FY18, is there, I'll entertain a motion to maintain the three levels of proposed preschool tuition as read?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Although, any discussion?
I guess I'm just curious as to why she's not raising those other ones. That's really the only question I have, like, why, why only the five-day?
I can tell you we've had some discussion about looking at the comparisons and seeing what's available for private preschool and what's available in our, you know, with the comparisons locally. And one of the things that Amy is trying to be cognizant of is to take into consideration that some of our population that need preschool the most are the. that need preschool the most are those families that maybe are least able to pay tuition. And she's trying to be cognizant of that in making it affordable to everyone.
Is that not, well, I understand the sentiment behind doing that. Is that not something that should be handled on a case-by-case basis in terms of offering a scholarship or something of that nature, rather than setting across, setting our tuition across the board at lower than market value?
And maybe that's a discussion forward down the road. There's no sliding fee. You know, we have a sliding fee for our tuition at kindergarten. So, if there is a family who, you know, has a hardship in paying the full tuition for kindergarten, we have a sliding fee based on the family situation. There is no sliding fee currently for preschool. And so, that, you know, may be a discussion forward down the road as a consideration. But currently, that's the way it's handled, so.
Because I think we're leaving some cash on the table here.
Preschool pays for itself? Like, at the current rate, if we don't raise the value-
No, no. Not fully.
Preschool doesn't pay for itself?
No. Not when you add, not when you're adding in the salary plus supplies, materials, and plus overhead, plus, yeah.
I mean, there's a reason, there's a reason that the Children's Castle and Newburyport Montessori and Mrs. Mary's are more expensive than we are.
Costs more.
Because it costs, it costs money. And, you know, I just think, I want to make sure that, I don't want to go up to their levels, mind you. But I think we can get a lot closer to their levels than where we are right now for similar programs.
Do we have a ballpark about how much the district is subsidizing?
We have those exact figures. I don't have them here, but we do have those exact figures.
Just be curious. Like, are we subsidizing pre-K to the cost of an enrollment interventionist, per se? For example?
I hear what you're saying, I can't answer.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think one of the things we saw last year, and again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think last year that we actually exceeded revenue projections for pre-K and K. So, I think part of this is finding a rate that's not going to lose us.
I agree. I agree. I still think that taking the three, and I believe they're the three most populated, three most populated sections of the preschool, and keeping those the same, when the market gives us flexibility to do a little more, is doing a disservice either for the subsidy or the additional interventionist or whatever, whatever it is. It's not like we're walking around here with saying, you know, we've got, cash isn't a problem for our schools. We know it's going to be a problem no matter, you know, what we're doing with our schools. There's always more than can be done, and it's a question of priorities. So, I guess my feeling is, I don't mind a sliding scale and putting the sliding scale into place for preschool if that's the way we can address the needs for lower-tuition students. But I think, you know, I'm just concerned that we're leaving money on the table here. And I don't know what to recommend exactly because in the presentation as we have it right now, that a tuition option or a sliding scale option was not included for us to consider.
I just was seeing if Amy had anything she wanted to add because she's been texting me.
And in the end, I mean, if we're only talking about going up a couple hundred dollars by 10 students, it's not worth the risk of potentially losing kids, especially if they're going to be in that at-risk population. So, it's all that sort of give and take, but truthfully, I don't, I don't know how to make a decision on that. Just, I'm just really curious.
Is there a reason why there's not a sliding scale for pre-K?
I'm not sure about that, Sean. But I think that's a good discussion point. I mean, I think all of this is a really good discussion point to have around it. And-
Amy's ready to throw something over that may over the TV.
No, she's just, she thinks she's a little behind on the TV feed. She's, I feel like I'm a little behind. You know, Amy, the discussion has been around raising tuition across the board for preschool and why we're making the decisions we are. So, I think it's all valid points and good things to talk about, but I-
How soon do we have to set, like, when is the, when is the date she wants to do?
I mean, it's in Feb, it's in early February.
Okay, so.
When she has the- That's one of the reasons why this is on the agenda for tonight.
I don't know if it's legit to recommend that we go forward as this this year, but put a strong mental note to figure this out for next year because I don't think we're going to, it sounds like we're asking a lot to figure out next week.
Yeah.
If we need it by the beginning of February.
I agree. I agree.
I'm in favor of that.
Can we take a vote?
Hang on for just a second. So, I just want to do a quick calculation. So, based on the projections for FY '19, which is essentially $4,000 more than what they were in '18, FY '18. So, you have $182,000 versus $186,000. So, that increase is, let me just do a little math here. That's about 2.2% of an increase.
I also got some feedback from Amy where she said yes, she would be in favor of raising preschool tuition if we could offer some scholarships to needy families.
That would probably maybe be the way to be able to, by raising tuition a little bit, that might be the way to be able to offer more scholarships or a sliding scale.
There's, you know, there's an art to selling prices. Where if you really underprice yourself, you're undervaluing your product. And we've got a great product.
And we should probably keep some data on people who have made inquiries this year and then, you know, because of the price, you know, made decisions not to send their child. So, maybe we could collect some of that data while people are starting to make those decisions during the month of February.
I mean, I see some of the enrollments of these other places, too, because if they're pricing themselves out, maybe they're not having very full, you know, offerings at those places as well. We might be all full, so.
That's true.
Alright, so it has been moved and seconded to keep those three rates the same for FY '19. Anyone want to move, move the question?
Move the question.
Get our heads.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. This is a way of making sure it gets on the agenda for next year as well.
Thank you for the discussion.
And I just want to add for Amy, she does agree with Nick, a sliding fee for preschool would be one.
Okay. Consider it agenda'd.
Feel better, Amy.
Feel better, Amy.
Alright, our next item is superintendent's search update. Is there one available? I know Ms. Menon's not here. There is one, okay.
I printed this, Bruce sent this to me and to the mayor. And he just said, "The first meeting of the superintendent's search committee was held on January 11th. It was attended by the full committee. Two staff from NESDEC joined us. Much of the first meeting was an orientation to the role of the committee that we had to consider applications of candidates, identify potential candidates, interview them, and recommend a slate of finalists to the school committee. We set up a calendar of nine interviews with the possibility of additional interviews if the cohort of candidates is strong." The search committee set up interviews for the 22nd, 24th, and 26th of January. At the conclusion of the meeting, the committee received a packet of candidate applications for review. That review occurring under the strictest of confidentiality. The committee reconvenes to identify those candidates it wishes to interview this week.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, our next item is the superintendent's report.
Date on the high school principal's search. The committee has met three times, and we interviewed second-round candidates. We had, I think it was a pretty large pool of 33. We, I am prepared to make some phone calls tomorrow and identify the finalists. I would, I will be happy to send out an email tomorrow. We're looking at three finalists at this point. And the next step in the process is to invite them to come and to spend some time at Newburyport High School. And then we will have focus groups that will consist of one of students, one of staff at the high school, one of parents, and another one for the administrative group. And have them also receive a tour of the building. At that point, we'll collect feedback. We'll get feedback sheets from anyone who speaks with the candidates. And the step after that will be to go do site visits and come back and-
Will school committee members be invited to any of those focus sessions?
They certainly, you certainly could be. I will, I will be happy to let you know when those are. I would certainly think that you could join any one of the groups that you wanted to.
Do we have any internal candidates?
We do not.
Just curious, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the superintendent's report? Anything else to report on tonight?
No.
Okay, alright, thank you. Are there any subcommittee reports? I don't think there is, I'm just taking a stab. We really haven't met, correct?
Right. I'd just like to say, I haven't talked a whole lot about the curriculum committee, and we usually meet on the fourth Monday, so I'd like to still do that, if that's okay with Angela. So, that's next Monday, so that wasn't on the agenda, but-
Is that posted?
Next Monday or the following? With the last Monday's the 29th.
I thought it was the fourth Monday.
That would be the fifth Monday. So, it's this Monday.
I think it's the 22nd.
Okay, 22nd.
There's five Mondays.
So, you can just check on the posting.
Yeah.
And then, you know, that we're due to have a finance subcommittee meeting tomorrow, when, provided the office is open, so.
It will be.
It will be, okay.
I just got the last report from Precision Weather. It's been downgraded a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So, we're not going to get eight, probably closer to five inches. We scheduled a retreat?
Oh, yeah, any, I know that it's been some-
23rd, right?
Thought we did, we-
No, we had to change it, right?
We did, but unfortunately, I sent out an email to all of you telling that's the night of the governor's State of the Commonwealth. I have to be at that at the State House. So, could we move it into the first week in February?
That's fine, you want to try, keep to that Thursday?
Still on a Tuesday, the Tuesday would be the sixth.
Our meeting's the fifth, right?
We have a meeting on the fifth.
We have a meeting on the fifth, correct.
I can do any evening that week. I'm sorry, no, I cannot do the seventh.
If I had a preference, I would choose either an off week or a Thursday instead of two nights in a row, but-
We were originally going to do a Thursday, right?
I can't do the-
Oh, you can't do Thursday?
I can't do the seventh. I could do the sixth, though. Do you want to look at the next week? The seventh?
Seventh of February is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's one day I can't do it.
You can do, okay, but you could do the sixth.
I can do, I can do the sixth.
I would just say I prefer not to do Monday and then Tuesday.
Okay. So, I can do the 13th?
I, I-
No?
I can cancel out of the seventh if I need to, but that's my first Wednesday.
What about the 13th?
13th I can do.
Everybody else?
Which one, I'm sorry, the 13th?
13th?
13th.
That's fine.
So, can we just check with Bruce and see if we can confirm the 13th? And if we could tentatively hold that?
The mayor's bringing Valentine's candy.
Okay. We'll bring Valentine's candy. We'll have a Valentine's theme retreat. Thank you, I appreciate you.
The date of the February 13th pending Mr. Menon's availability.
Six to nine, and we'll identify a location.
TBA.
Alright.
Alright. Is there any need for executive session this evening? Given that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ooh, second.
Second, second. Any discussion?
Discuss.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I declare this meeting of the Newburyport School Committee adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cole.